Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty one meeting of the Town of Isop Zoning Board of Appeals. We'll start by reading the public notice and then we'll call the applications thereafter. When you hear your application, call, please step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please. We'll start with the public notice. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Isop will hold an in-person public meeting on Tuesday, September twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty one at Town Hall West, four oh one Main Street, Isop, New York, one one seven five one. This meeting will also be streamed live over the internet. Date is September twenty second, two thousand and twenty one. John M. Lorenzo, Chairman. Mr. Chairman, our first application tonight is number six oh two dash twenty one, Durasmo Family Irrevocable Trust, to renew permit for two-family family use only residence, B District, north side of Haywood Street, number ninety-five, two hundred feet west of Madison Avenue, Brentwood, New York. Is there anyone here for the application? Please step up to the podium. That's why I say that. I try to make it easy for you.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect, this lady threatened to slap me.
Name and address.
Hi.
She has my vote.
You know what? I'm on that one, too.
Name and address, for record, please.
Yes, Thomas Durasmo, ninety-five, Haywood Street, ninety-eight years old.
Brentwood, New York.
Brentwood, New York.
God bless you.
You can't write that just for that.
Gee whiz, my goodness.
That's what you're looking for.
No, no. And he's smiling, he's happy.
Good shit, he said. Looking for a job.
So it's based on age? Everything's in order? Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the Board have any further questions? Mr. Nicoli, I'll take a motion.
Will see if the applications are period of three years, and I hope we see you again.
Yes, sir.
I'll be here.
All in favor? All right. Have a great night, guys.
I think they're going to up the age to a hundred.
Next application is number six oh three dash twenty one, Marie Josephat and Serge Josephat, to renew permit for two-family family use only residence, B District, north side of Pamela Road, number seventy-four, two hundred sixteen point seven one feet south of Comac Grove, Brentwood, New York. Is there anyone here for the applicant? Second call.
Second call.
Next application, number six oh four dash twenty one, Mark R. and Shelley W. Rodman, to renew permit for two-family families use only residence, B District, northwest corner of Lincoln Avenue, number two forty, Joseph Street Extension, Sable, New York. Sir, your name and address for the record, please.
Mark Rodman, two forty Lincoln Avenue, Sable, New York, one one seven eight two.
How are you tonight, sir?
Good, how are you?
Good. Parents live with you? Age is the criteria?
Correct. They don't live with us currently, but we're looking for that as an option.
Yes, okay. Well, they will be living with you then, I'm sorry. All right. Everything's in order. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the Board have any questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion.
Can we submit the application for the record?
All in favor? Application granted.
Thank you.
Next application, number six oh five dash twenty one, John P. and Patricia A. Walsh, permission to use dwelling for two-family families use only pursuant to Isop Town Code section sixty-eight four nineteen point one, Residence A District, south side of Poplar Street, number one ninety-four, under ten feet east of Frendale Boulevard, Central Isop, New York. Ma'am, your name and address for the record.
Patricia Walsh, one ninety-four Poplar Street, Central Isop.
How are you tonight? So you're seeking permission to two-family families use only, medical is the criteria? Everything seems to be in order? Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the Board have any questions? Mr. Nicoli, I'll take a motion.
Will see if the applications are period of three years.
All in favor? All right. Application granted.
Thank you.
Next application, six oh six dash twenty one, Samantha Stevens and Ryan Del Rosso, permission to install in-ground pool, leaving a side yard of nine point eight feet and rear yard of twelve point two feet instead of required fourteen feet each, and pool patio leaving a side yard of five point eight feet instead of required six feet, leave driveway and patio on side property line not having required setback of four feet each to use dwelling for two families, families only pursuant to Isop Town Code section sixty-eight dash four nineteen point one, Residence A District, south side of Courtside Drive, number twenty, three hundred twenty-two point five five feet east of Coats Avenue, Holbrook, New York. Welcome, Ms. Trelle, name and address for the record.
Roxanne Trelle, Dynamic Expediting Services, with offices at ten forty Terry Road, Bronx Honcombe, New York.
How are you, Ms. Trelle?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
So we are here to establish two-family family use only. One of the owners, Samantha Stevens, it will be her mother, who was living in the apartment, and it was based on medical. We did provide birth certificates and doctor's notes. We're also here for the driveway and the patio being on the property line. And then we have the in-ground pool, which has a side, they're proposing a side yard of nine point eight and a rear yard of twelve point two instead of fourteen. We were able to locate some precedent for the pool. We have case number three nine two dash nineteen and case number four five six dash eighty-two, which granted a rear yard of ten feet instead of fourteen feet. And we have case six five two dash ninety, which granted a side yard of ten feet instead of fourteen feet. And then we do have a couple of cases for the pool patio. The most granted was three feet instead of six feet, and that was at two ninety-five Columbia Street.
Great. Yeah, the pool was the biggest hurdle, in my opinion. Obviously, we have to take a vote on the Board. The driveway and the pool patio seems to be diminished, I see them every week. The two-family families use only is based on medical, everything else seems to be in order?
Yes.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the Board have any questions? Mr. Messina, I'll take a motion.
Motion to grant. Second, this is the apartment for three years. Second that, too.
All in favor? Application granted.
Thank you.
Next application, number six oh seven dash twenty one, Juan Vasquez from Montana, permission to establish accessory apartment pursuant to Isop Town Code section sixty-eight dash six oh two and leave driveway on the side yard of one foot instead of the required four feet, Residence A District, east side of Conroe, number twenty-three seventeen, seven hundred eighty feet north of Pecanix Street, Honcombe, New York. Again, Ms. Trelle, welcome, name and address for the record, please.
Roxanne Trelle, Dynamic Expediting Services, with offices at ten forty Terry Road, Bronx Honcombe, New York. We are here to establish an accessory apartment. The home is owner-occupied. The apartment is seven hundred and twenty-eight square feet, and we're also here for relaxation on the driveway, having a side yard of one feet instead of the four feet that's required.
Great. There's any, everything's in order for the apartment, ma'am?
Yes, everything's in order.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the Board have any questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion.
Second.
All in favor? Application granted.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Next application, number six oh eight dash twenty one, Harold Howard and Harold Swirley, permission to leave that, having a rear yard of ten point nine feet instead of required fifteen feet after shower with attached trellis, having a rear yard of six point eight feet, set at required fifteen feet in attached shed, six point six by seven point one feet, having a rear yard of twenty-one point three feet instead of the required twenty-five feet, Residence B double A District, southwest corner of Baywalk, number twenty, and Birch Walk, Fair Harbor, New York. Welcome, Mr. LeCary, name and address for the record, please.
Thomas Beal LeCary, one twenty-seven West Main Street, East Isop, Isop, New York, Doctor, and Mrs. Tischler, sitting out here. I'm here with Eric Schuler.
Is Dr. Tischler the work doctor?
It is.
Yes, he is.
I Dr. Tischler, it's Chris Nefolia. He's been brushing regularly. I may have to see you in a little while.
I do have some photographs which would help explain and better give you guys a better idea of what is there.
Sure. Who's security behind you?
I'm Eric Schuler, I'm the contact.
Oh, I can't see where you're at, the mascot, he's standing there like you.
The, two of the photographs, which are, I think are important, are the two that show the height of the deck. On one part of the, one side, I believe it's the west side, it's eighteen inches, just under, and on the east side, it is exactly two feet. The house is not being raised, there's no plans to raise it. The shower is a.
You mean lift it, right?
Elevated.
Raise it.
Oh, no, 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 yeah, elevated. Dr. Tischler does not want to raise it, doesn't want to lift it either. I would point out that the applications made, in my opinion, de minimis. I've spoke to planning. Planning has decided, has numerous properties with similar setbacks, similar relaxations, and I'll defer to Deidre if she wants to say anything.
Deidre, any objection from planning?
No. For the second floor shower. The shower.
Sure. All right. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the Board have any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Is Mr. LeCary wearing shoes?
No, not attached.
Are you wearing shoes tonight?
I think the more appropriate question is, does he own shoes? I wore these flip flops to my daughter's wedding a couple weeks, several months ago in Kismet.
That's great.
And I had to wear a suit, I was required to wear a suit.
I love it. Are you feeling it?
Yeah.
This person will take a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion that we grant the application.
I will happily second that despite the years of torture that Dr. Tischler put through these years.
All in favor? Application granted.
Next application, number six oh nine dash twenty one, Rose Lem, Betty Chung and Warren Lem, permission to erect enclosed porch, fourteen point five feet by fifteen point seven feet, leaving a side yard of nine point one feet instead of the required ten feet, total side yards of twenty point eight feet instead of the required twenty-five feet, to erect accessory structure, ten point four feet by nineteen point two feet, leaving a side yard of eight point five feet instead of the required ten feet, Residence B double A District, east side of West Lighthouse Walk, number fifty-five, two hundred forty feet south of Maple Court, Kismet. Welcome again, Mr. LeCary, name and address for the record.
Thank you. Thomas LeCary, one twenty-seven West Main Street, East Isop. I'm here with Glenn Graham. Glenn, he's been working with Mr. Lem, Howard, Howard's the brother, Warren Lem on this. Would point that there needs to be a technical correction. The shed has been existing since well before nineteen seventy. I do have Sam Wood here, builder from Kismet, who's a little younger than me, who can always, who always.
Mr. LeCary, third is younger than you, but.
It's de minimis, then.
It's de minimis, de minimis, I know.
I'm sure it is.
But we do demand it.
Okay.
Well, I don't know. Just telling you what to do.
What else isn't?
Because it says to erect.
It says to erect, it's to maintain.
Well, I see, you need to leave.
It's to maintain, yes.
All right, so you'd like to make an amendment to state.
I'll make a motion to amend the call of the meeting to indicate to maintain the shed instead of.
Just what I wanted to say. Perfect. All in favor? Deidre, I'm sure that there's no objection from planning, I'm sure that the side yard relief will lower. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the Board have any questions? Mr. Wexler, I'll take a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
All in favor? Case granted.
All right, next application, Mrs. LeCary has not had enough reviews. Number six oh ten dash twenty one, Gary Leone and Dawn Madsen, permission to erect a two-story dwelling, leaving floor area ratio thirty-nine point eight one percent instead of the permitted thirty percent. First story deck, leaving a side yard of ten feet instead of required fifteen feet, second story deck, leaving a side yard of eight point five feet instead of required fifteen feet, and entrance platform, leaving a side yard of four point five feet instead of the required fifteen feet, Residence B double A District, west side of Lighthouse Walk, four hundred twenty feet north of Maple Court, Kismet. Mr. LeCary, welcome.
Thank you. Glenn is going to be explaining a little bit about the project. I will point out that one of the main reasons for the shorter setback on the south side is because we are dealing with Dawn's mother, who's well into her eighties, she's handicapped, she needs access by way of a ramp and by way of a, an elevator, which is, which is why that setback on that one side is so much less. There is a lot of precedence on this one, the neighbors next door, on either side, Barry Rosenbloom, they had a similar application in terms of the setbacks several years ago, which was granted, and on the helm house, which is on the north side, their setback, I believe, is six feet, and I'll turn this over to.
You're not making a reasonable accommodation argument with respect to the elevator, just making a straight-up area variance.
Okay.
Right?
That's it.
Yeah, okay.
In a nutshell.
Good evening. Glenn Graham with Graham Associates. Just to elaborate a little bit on the ramp or the elevator, the reason it's in the call is because it's five point five feet wide. If it was four, like the entry ramp, it wouldn't be included. And then to just read a couple cases of precedent, we have case number two sixty-three fourteen was granted a side yard of four feet instead of fifteen, we're asking for ten feet. We also have the Rosenbloom case, five forty-nine ten, that was granted ten feet instead of fifteen, the same as ours, and that just happens to be due south of us. Correct. And then finally, we have case four twenty-one oh three, Bolton, seven point four feet instead of fifteen, that's about three hundred and fifty feet south of our property. As far as FAR, there is precedent as well. The Ahern case, three forty-five dash fourteen, was at forty-four percent, we're asking for thirty-nine, and I believe in Kismet, you'll find a lot, fifties and sixties even.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, what do we have as far as FAR precedent in our radius of two hundred?
I just mentioned the Ahern case at forty-four percent, that is three hundred feet south on the same block, on west side of West Lighthouse.
Oh, it's five hundred.
Three hundred feet away.
So we have one. What is the next one? I mean, I don't know if forty point four, forty-four point four is an outlier, and the rest, I don't know what the nature and character of the neighborhood is.
Yeah, Rosenbloom was granted fifty-nine point eight eight, that's directly next door. Two thousand and fourteen, after the code change in two thousand and eleven.
Who was the chairman in two thousand and fourteen?
This was reserved and then granted.
Stop, 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 just right up there.
Quick, while you're ahead, while you're ahead. I must have been out that day.
Some crazy vice chair must have been out there.
Thank you.
Does anyone, Deidre, from planning, any objections to the application? There is precedent, all. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application?
I signed the precedent.
Does the Board have any questions?
You're right, 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 and I'm proud of it.
What do you call him, Chairman Emeritus?
Emeritus.
Mr. Chairman Emeritus, will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant the application. I'll second.
All in favor?
All right. Mr. Graham, were you a lawyer, and you have a decision that's in your favor, written by the judge, the first thing you say?
John Wexler, you see this brilliant decision?
Yes, very well-written decision, Judge, extremely well-written. That's why I'm a lawyer. No reason.
That's why you bring it up. Exactly. I'm just a support staff here today.
Oh, Jesus. Thank you, John, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night, everyone.
Next application, number six eleven dash twenty one, Pedro Donaire, permission to erect six-foot fence, having a second front yard of two point three feet instead of the required ten feet, shed having a second front yard of fifteen point nine feet instead of the required thirty-five feet, Residence B double A District, southeast corner of Nugent Avenue, number eleven oh one, and Garden City Street, Bay Shore, New York. Is anyone here for the applicant? Second call, Mr. Chairman?
Second call.
Next application, number six twelve dash twenty one, Christopher M. and Aaron Tanner, permission to erect a two-story addition, leaving a side yard of twelve point five feet instead of required fourteen feet, rear yard of twenty-three point nine four feet instead of the required twenty-five feet, and floor area ratio thirty-one point six one percent instead of the twenty-five percent, Residence B District, south side of Garden Street, number five, one hundred four point eight five feet, west of Brook Avenue, Bay Shore, New York. Sir, your name and address for the record, please.
Christopher Tanner, five Garden Street, Bay Shore, one one seven zero six.
How are you tonight, sir?
Good.
Good. If you could just pull that microphone close to you, because we have wonderful acoustics here, and we can't really hear.
Six point two, six point two, it was close.
So you're here seeking permission to erect a two-story addition? We got some side yard relief and some floor area relief. It appears we already have a ZBA approval for thirty-one point two eight percent for FAR. And you just come back for three?
Yeah, we needed a little bit more. After we approved for the variance, we spoke with our architect, and the floor plan didn't necessarily fit the irregular shape that we asked for, so now we're back for a little bit more.
It's, boy, you just can't take yes for an answer.
Well, it was.
Don't, I'm just teasing, don't say.
Gotcha.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the Board have any questions? Mr. Nicoli, I'll take a motion. All in favor? Application granted.
Thanks.
Don't come back again, though.
This is the last time. Number six thirteen dash twenty one, Rose Costa, permission to leave in-ground pool, having a rear yard of six point two feet instead of the required ten feet, south entrance having side yard of eleven point five feet instead of the required fourteen feet, patio on side property line, and rear yard of two feet instead of the required six feet each, and having rear landscaping thirteen percent instead of the required forty percent, Residence B District, southeast corner of Wesburn Avenue, number seventy-four, and Stevens Road, west Isop, New York. Is there anyone here for the applicant? Second call, Mr. Chairman.
Wow, a few second calls, yes.
Number six fourteen dash twenty one, Eric Quillis, permission to leave second-story addition, having a rear yard of seventeen feet instead of the required twenty-five feet, shed twelve feet by ten feet, having eighteen feet behind the front line of dwelling instead of twenty, required twenty feet, Residence B District, eastern terminus of Brook Lane, number eighty-one, one thousand seventy-six point nine seven feet east of Lincoln Avenue, Sable, New York. Ms. Whalen, welcome, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Board, Ms. Passaro, Ms. McGrath, Ms. Ryan, thank you very much. My name is Janice Whalen. My office is at twenty-three Greens Street, Huntington, New York, suite three zero two. I appear for Mr. Eric Quillis, who's here with me this evening, to answer any questions that you may have of me. Tonight, we seek two variances for the residents located at eighty-one Brook Lane in Sable. The first is to maintain the existing rear yard, which was previously considered a side yard, we'd like to maintain it at seventeen feet instead of the required twenty-five feet. And the second variance is to maintain a shed that is less than the required twenty feet back from the rear profit, from the building line. The reason for that variance is because the shed is in line with the existing rear yard, rear line of the house. To move that shed back would only increase the rear yard deficiency. I have two letters in support, both from the affected neighbors, one to the north and one to the west. May I give it to you?
The office will pay for it.
Thank you very much, and they're in full support of the application. I've also brought for you this evening some pictures that will orient you. The first is a picture of the house, a very beautiful improvement to the neighborhood, that is the front of the house. The second is the very large side yard, which is to Lane Brook, the existing wetlands. The third photograph is showing the existing rear yard, which was again formally considered a side yard, and you can see that the second floor addition that we're requesting approval for goes straight up, and that the shed, which we're requesting a two or four, thank you for.
Jay is the human podium.
Exactly in line with the rear line of the house.
How did the house get to be that way?
Well, my client purchased the property six years ago. First of all, the, the house was originally part of the Westerly lot, it was subdivided in about nineteen seventy-six, and it looks like the permits that were filed to build the original house showed a side yard of nineteen feet. I think at the time, you were allowed to pick which was your front yard. So that was considered the side yard, and it was originally approved at nineteen feet. Somehow, the house was built with a seventeen-foot side yard, and I have a CO from nineteen seventy, seventy-eight, I believe, that shows that the house was approved at twelve hundred square feet. There were no side yard or rear yard or any setback variances noted. When my client purchased the property, he sought to renovate it. He had received DEC approval to do so. We've got proof that we have DEC approval. In nineteen seventy-six, when the house was first built, there was also DEC approval. Unfortunately, time, money, COVID, he was not able to, to complete the applications. But rest assured, the property.
Wait, 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 wait. He was able to complete the building, but not the application?
He completed the building, the building is on, but he did not file, admittedly, we did not file for.
I'm not a construction expert, but isn't it a lot cheaper and easier to get the permit than build the actual structure?
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, sir. It didn't happen in this case, and sometimes people ask for forgiveness, and sometimes they ask for permission, and unfortunately, this falls into the first category. But the property has been assessed, I have proof of record from the assessor's office that he's being assessed for both the shed and for the second-story addition.
They assess you for the shed?
Well, whatever, whatever is on the property, the assessor came and.
They think inventory.
Everything has been inventoried, so.
So what did the house look like before he did the renovation?
It was a one-story, twelve hundred and twenty-four square foot, three-bedroom, one-bedroom, one-bathroom residence, and as you can see from the pictures, it's been made bigger with the second story.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you. What was the distance in the backyard prior to the construction?
Seventeen feet. So we just went straight up, but again, the, the records indicate that it was approved at nineteen feet. I don't know where that extra two feet came from, but, but when it was.
It was CO'd at seventeen.
But it's CO'd at seventeen.
That's all the.
So this, the proposed second story addition is in line?
Completely in line.
When was the construction completed?
Um, it's, it hasn't been CO'd yet, but, but it's for the most part done.
You wouldn't.
Right, right, exactly. I'm going to say within the last couple of years of construction. When he first bought the property six years ago, he didn't have the funding, and there were some issues that went on, he was in a former relationship that ended, not to get into the soap opera, but he just started.
I don't hear the soap opera. I haven't got soap opera. What is, is there precedent for this application?
I don't see any precedent, because it's such a unique geographic area. He basically has no southerly neighbors, he has no easterly neighbors.
Unique parcel, right?
It's very unique, and as a matter of fact, when the property was originally built, there was a dedication that was given to the town to extend the terminus of Brook Lane to make it longer and to create a cul-de-sac, so.
That's how we got that part on the bottom, which was what, south?
Thank you. Thank you. But it's really a beautiful renovation, he's in contract now, actually, to sell the property, so it's going to be owner-occupied.
That's why he's here.
That's why we're here. But actually, he brought the assessor to the house, there was no intention to not complete it, it was just a matter of money and timing, and, and again, he's been assessed on it, so there's been no, you know, desire to evade any payment of taxes on this. But we respectfully submit that while, you know, this is a self-created hardship, there were existing, you know, geographic issues, like the, where, where the rear yard of the house, where the rear property line, rather, building line sits, has been maintained. He took down two sheds that were also on the property, and he created a very aesthetically pleasing single shed. There's a garage in the house, as you can see from the pictures, a lot of money has been put on this property to, you know, to really complement the neighborhood, and the neighbors are in full support.
I don't think I've ever heard the word aesthetically pleasing in shed used in the sense of.
This is an aesthetically pleasing shed.
Look at the pictures.
I do, I do know the area.
I have more pictures to show you. This is another picture from, from the second story, looking down to the neighbor's property. Very large side yard, which is adjoining the wetlands.[1684.82]
I guess so.
And here's some pictures of the shed.
Do you have any pictures of what it looked like before?
I do not. I have surveys of what was there before, but I don't have any pictures of what was there before.
How does anybody undertake this much construction without benefit of the permit? I'm not understanding.
I'm not going-
Don't you remember the first time I was before you?
And what happened?
I built the whole house on property that never had anything on it.
You seem a little beautiful.
Did you grant it?
You did.
Another, another-
You did a good job.
It's really beautiful. And it's quite an improvement from what was there before. The neighbors are very happy.
I thought the house was great.
That's the existing house.
It looked like before.
So one of the variances is in existing condition. The second one is a de minimis two feet. But again, if we were to have put the shed in a compliant location-
I think, I think, I think we're all.
Thank you very-
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a moment. One favor?
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Next application, number 615-21 David Troy. Permission to erect one-story addition 9.7 feet by 17.17, having side yard of 9.9 feet, set of required 14 feet and floor area ratio of 30% instead of permitted 25%. Shed having rear yard of 1.8 feet, set of 22 feet. Residence B District, South Side of Wenman Avenue number 28, 100 feet west of Degnan Boulevard, Bay Shore, New York. Sir, your name and address for the record, please, and welcome.
Good evening. Thomas Blor, the architect for the project, 6D Carlton Avenue, Suite 202, Isle of Terrace, New York, 11752.
How are you tonight, sir?
Good, no worries. The intent of this application is to construct a new one-story rear addition. The addition will be utilized to expand the existing kitchen and to create a new mudroom. We're requesting an FAR relaxation of 30% instead of the permitted 25. And as far as the side yard, this is an existing side yard setback of 9.9 to the east instead of the required 14. The new rear addition is directly in line with the existing which has a non-conforming side yard setback, does not encroach any closer than the existing. And lastly, we're requesting a shed, an existing shed rear yard setback of 1.8 instead of the required two feet.
Going straight back, right?
Yep.
Anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Nicole, I'll take a motion. One favor?
Aye.
Application granted, sir.
Thank you.
Next application, number 616-21 Andrea Leah Ford. Permission to erect two-story addition, leaving side yards 10 feet instead of required 14 feet. And to install cellar entrance, leaving side yard of six feet instead of the permitted encroachment of eight feet, Residence B District, West West Side of Maddox Avenue, number 105, Bruce Devlin Avenue, Islip, New York. Welcome back, Mr. Blor.
Thank you. Thomas Blor, the architect for the project, 6D Carlton Avenue, Suite 202, Isle of Terrace, New York, 11752. Similar application, only the intent here is it is a two-story rear addition. The addition is going to be utilized to expand the existing residence with a new den, full bath, and master bedroom suite on the second floor. We're requesting again an existing side yard setback of 10 feet to the west instead of the required 14. The new rear addition is directly in line with the existing which has a non-conforming side yard setback and does not encroach any closer than the existing. It's technically a crawl space. It's about five feet underneath the house and we would like an exterior cellar slash crawl space entrance to use for storage down there. I'm requesting a side yard setback of six feet instead of the permitted encroachment setback of eight feet.
Never to be enclosed?
Never to be enclosed.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Wexler, I'll take a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make the motion that we grant the application with the five though that the cellar entrance never be closed.
Second. One favor? Application granted.
Thank you.
Next application, number 617-21 Adrian Trager. Permission to erect roof over patio having height of 15 feet instead of permitted 14 feet, Residence A District, South Side of Edward Street, number 268, 267.86 feet west of Connectwood Avenue, Isle of Terrace, New York. Welcome back again to the trifecta.
Thank you. Thomas Blor, the architect for the project, 6D Carlton Avenue, Suite 202, Isle of Terrace, New York, 11752. I would like to clarify, the intent of this application is technically to legalize and maintain this existing rear roofed over patio. We're requesting a height of 15 feet instead of the required 14 feet.
I'll make the motion to amend the call of the meeting to reflect permission to maintain rather than erect. Second. One favor?
The brief history on it, it's a little bit of a nightmare for the homeowner. He's owned the house for many years.
One foot variance, right?
Only a one foot variance, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, we've granted ones before when they're open, accessory structures. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application?
Tom, it's going to be open on all four sides.
Correct, it's completely open.
And it will remain open?
It will remain open, yep.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Wexler, I'll take a motion.
I'll make the motion that we grant the application, apply that the accessory structure remain open on all four sides and the wind blows freely through it. Second motion.
One favor? Application granted.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Have a great evening. Next application, number 618-21 Jimmy B. and Emily M. Desceney, Sensi, excuse me, Descensi. Permission to erect a one-story addition, two-story addition, and roofed over porch, leaving side yards of 10.1 feet instead of required 14 feet, total side yards of 20.2 feet instead of required 28 feet, all having floor area ratio of 31.25% instead of the permitted 25%. And to leave driveway having side yard of 0.7 feet instead of required four feet, Residence B District, West Side of Division Avenue, number 130, 376 feet north of Brook Street, West Saville, New York. Sir, your name and address for the record?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Nicholas Fluger, architect, the Bullard Fluger Architects, 85 East Main Street, Bay Shore, New York, 01706. I'm here on behalf of the homeowner, Mr. Descensi. We're proposing a two-story and one-story addition onto the existing two-story home. The purpose of the addition is to reorganize and expand the existing spaces as many of the existing rooms in the home are relatively small. And we are not increasing the bedroom count, so the bedroom count will remain the same, three bedrooms. On the north side of the property, we are actually aligning the two-story portion of the addition with the existing home, so it will not be getting any closer to the property line. On the south side, we are getting closer to the property line. But we had some communications with Ms. Ryan and she actually emailed us just today and said that there was a precedent of 10 feet in the area. And we are requesting 10.1. And with regards to the FAR, we are requesting 31.25%. We realize it may not be a precedent for an FAR that high, but we just ask to please consider that part of the proposal is a side covered porch on the south side and it accounts for 1.4% of the FAR.
So you're saying the south side covered porch?
Correct, the proposed south side covered porch.
Okay, and that's, you're saying that's putting the FAR 1.4% up?
Correct, correct. So without that porch, we would be 29.85% under that customary 30%.
And that covered porch never to be enclosed?
I'm sorry?
That covered porch never to be enclosed?
No.
You agree to that?
Yes, we agree, yes.
All right, did you have any objection or complaining?
Not that-.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes, sir.
I don't have any opposition to it, but I'm just pointing out maybe to Deidre, how will we know in six months from now if somebody has an application and similar locations is up? I'm giving you 618-21, you granted 31.25. How will we know unless we have some sort of photographic memory, which I don't, our chairman may, or vice chairman may, but how will we know that there is this exception?
We have this handsome-
This is a grant sent with the Russell County, which is a grant which is necessarily not, says it's not great, but this is a natural, liberal space inside.
And when you do your precedent research, do you look to see what the precedence was for? Because I'm of the opinion we'd never pick this up.
If it's over there for some time, I think-
Okay.
If you have curious thoughts or complaints.
Very good. No, no, okay, I feel-
There's this angel on our shoulder saying, "Do you really want to go to 31?"
Angel named, you're good.
No, the angel named Chairman, remember this?
Yeah, no, that's what's concerning me.
Your unconscious, Mr. Wexler.
I understand it's open, but I just want to make sure that we don't have, by lack of knowledge, we don't keep granting them when there's an exception to that one. So do promise to tell us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We do also have a handsome council down there that has a great haircut that is going to write beautifully.
Who's that?
That guy.
Oh, oh, well, oh, you said great haircut.
Yeah, right, now, now, he can, our chairman can make that comment.
Can make that comment. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion.
With the provision that the- Thank you. Second.
One favor? Application granted, guys. Chairman, instead of calling this application, I would request that we be able to recall those who are on the second floor. Sure. Start from the beginning? I'll defer to Ms. Passaro. 603-21?
Application number 603-21 Marie Josephat and Serge Josephat. Has anybody arrived on that? Hello, come on down to the podium. To renew permit for two-family families only, Residence A District, West Side of Pamela Road, 216.71 feet south of Comac Road, Brentwood.
Good evening. Name and address for the record, please.
Marie Josephat, 74 Pamela Lane, Brentwood, New York, 11717.
Great. You're here seeking permission to renew two-family families only, age is the criteria?
Yes.
Everything still in order?
The same.
Great. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? The board have any questions? Mr. Nicole, I'll take a motion.
Well, should we have the application for period of years?
One favor?
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you very much.
614.
Application number 611-21. Has anybody arrived on the application of Pedro Donayar? Let me say that again. And the last second call is application number 613-21. Has anybody arrived on the application of Rose Costa?
Next application then is number 619-21 Basilico Realty Partners, East LLC. For the record, I'd like to include myself in consideration of this application. Application denied. Permission to reconstruct non-conforming use by modernizing asphalt manufacturing equipment pursuant to Section 68415A, resulting in a reduction of area of land occupied by asphalt production equipment to erect 11 accessory structures exceeding maximum permitted height of 18 feet. Structure 1, AGG belt feet deck leaving height of 24 feet to- Mr. Guardino. Baghouse exhaust leaving height of 55 feet. Structure 3, Baghouse leaving height of 24 feet. Structure 4, Wrap Belt to Screen leaving height of 24 feet. Structure number 5, Wrap Belt leaving height of 35 feet. Structure number 6, Drum leaving height of 33 feet. Structure number 7, AC Tank leaving height of 46 feet. Structure number 8, Silo Electric Motor leaving height of 80.16 feet. Structure number 9, Silo leaving height of 58.91 feet. Structure number 10, AGG Belt, Drum leaving height of 27 feet. Structure number 11, Bag House Duck leaving height of 50 feet. To erect a retaining wall, retaining proposed berm, leaving height of nine feet with six-foot chain link fence atop, resulting in a combined height of 15 feet instead of permitted six feet. Industrial 1 District, North Side of Furrows Road, approximately 1,150 square feet, 150 feet west of Nichols Road, Holbrook. Sir, before you start, Mr. Guardino, I just want to place on the record, Mr. Chairman, that some years ago I served in the office of Town Attorney and at that time was involved with a litigation of involving a prior owner of this parcel around land use issues decided by the Board of Appeals. Mr. Guardino, if you are at all uncomfortable with me sitting on this application, please say so and I'll happily accuse myself if not.
Not at all, Mr. Messina, thank you.
You'll regret that, Mr.-
I always know you as a person to be very fair.
I appreciate that and I just wanted full disclosure.
Great, terrific.
How are you tonight?
I'm doing well. Can I hand up a couple of things?
Sure.
Or one thing?
Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Anthony Guardino, Law Firm of Farrell Fritz, Hoppard, New York, for the applicant, Basilico Materials East. I think this should be enough. Thanks so much.
Do you have a guitar?
I begin?
Yes, sir.
Terrific, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As I mentioned, Anthony Guardino, representing Basilico Materials East, which is an affiliate of the Basilico family of companies that you probably are all very familiar with. PMA, as I'll refer to them, currently operates an asphalt and concrete batching facility on an industrial zone piece of property located at 615 Furrows Road in Holbrook. I have with me tonight, Thomas Basilico, who is the Materials Division Manager for Basilico Materials East, Jim, James Boklos, Caitlin Zervidio, and Robert Keen, also all from Basilico. And I have Steve Fahill from Cameron Engineering. He's a professional engineer, if there are questions about the side plan. So before I get into the case itself, I just want to just go backwards a little bit and Mr. Messina kind of, you know, made reference to it. This application is a legal non-conforming use today. The property is located in an industrial zone, but it's Industrial 1. And at the time, the facility was built in 1966, Industrial 1 actually allowed concrete and asphalt batching plants. The town records indicate that there were certificates of occupancy and certificates of completion that were issued covering all of the structures on the site and pertinent to the use as an asphalt and concrete batching plant. And in your booklet at Exhibit 2, I have the Building Division Certificate that lists everything there. But the board, the town board, in 19, a couple, I think late 1960s amended the Industrial 1 regulations to prohibit this use. So the use existed and then it was changed, the code was changed. In 2000, the predecessor of Basilico made an application to this board seeking to expand the legal non-conforming use of the property for outdoor storage of materials. Came in not for the legal non-conforming use of the batching plant, but apparently there were materials stored on site. And there was a question as to whether the storage of materials was part of that use. So they tried to, they came in asking for an expansion of the legal non-conforming use and that related to both materials and trucks. And also to establish a legal non-conforming use with respect to a radio antenna that was on the site that is no longer there. On January 9th of 2001, this board rendered a decision in which it determined that the asphalt plant operating on the site was a legal non-conforming use. And that's in the decision, that's in your packet at Exhibit 3. And then there was the same legal determination that was made by the court, the Supreme Court, which so ordered a stipulation that was signed by the town and the court. And that's in your packet at Exhibit 4. I don't need to go into, I just wanted to make sure that it was part of the record because it is, it is-
Except in fairness.
Yeah.
I have to tell you, this is not an order of the court, it's a stipulation.
It was so ordered, I believe, wasn't it, Mr. Messina?
Yeah, the court needed a little persuasion.
Well, you, well, you know better than I do.
Yes, Mr. Thanks.
Okay, yeah. So, so the stipulation and the covenants that were part of that stipulation or condition of that stipulation, which were also attached to the stipulation, basically authorized the onsite storage of materials of asphalt and concrete that were involved in asphalt and concrete batching processes. But there was a condition that there had to be a berm installed and a fence along the portion of the southerly boundary along Furrows Road. I would just-
Was it installed?
What's that? Partially so. There was a partial berm that was installed and we're looking to extend it.
Was it complied with?
As far as I know. Again, it was our predecessor. There does not seem to be any violations on the property, which is great news. So then Basilico acquired the site from Prima Asphalt in 2007 and obviously enjoys the same non-conforming rights. So now we have the application that's before you. And we are now seeking the board's approval for, one, a special use permit and some height variances in order to upgrade and consolidate several pieces of outdated equipment that are associated with the asphalt batching operation. They would like to install new state-of-the-art equipment on the site that would improve handling methods, material handling methods, and asphalt production efficiency. And the upgrades would also, more importantly, reduce air and noise emissions, fuel consumption, and waste. So that's all a positive.
So that nothing interrupts you.
Yes.
It's essentially your argument then, is it not, that by doing the environmental improvements and things like that, that actually you're moving in a direction toward conformity? In a manner of speech?
With respect to the site? I'm sorry?
I'm very sorry. Usually they tell me to shut up because of your laugh. So I remember the lady behind you on Zoom for something else. Hi. So the argument, what I was asking councils whether or not his argument is that by becoming more, less, emitting less pollutants and things like that, you're heading more toward conformity rather than away from it. And his answer was?
Yeah, well, yeah, and particularly with respect-
So I remember the lady behind you on Zoom for something else. Hi. So the argument, what I was asking councils whether or not his argument is that by becoming more less, emitting less pollutants and things like that, you're heading more toward conformity rather than away from it. His answer was?
Yeah, well, yeah, and particularly with respect to the site because we are consolidating, we're shrinking the footprint of the facility. Obviously with respect to the use, we can't do anything about that.
So then you're decreasing the amount of nonconformity.
That, that's, that's true and we are shrinking the footprint by approximately fifty eight percent. So there's a comparison chart. That's pretty significant. That's in your, in your booklet at exhibit six. And the other thing that's really important is that right now there are two asphalt batching plants and one concrete plant that are on the site. We are removing one of the asphalt batching plants. So plants are going from two to one. Right, exactly, exactly to your point. Also, the reduction is going to move the operation, again to your point, Mr. Messina, it's going to move the operation as we shrink it further north. Obviously, we're not moving south towards the homes. We're getting closer to the railroad. So we're trying to bring the use up that way. So it's increasing the separation distance to the homes at the south.
I'm sorry, Mr. Guardino, will the modern, so you're modernizing the plant?
Yes.
Will the modernization permit the increased production? Is that what is foreseen?
No, my next point, I was, you're ahead of me.
I couldn't have interrupted.
No, 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 it's perfectly fine. So the modifications are going to reduce the overall asphalt production by nearly thirty percent.
Why are they making less?
Well, it has something, I'm gonna let Thomas explain that because it has something to do with production and storage. So the production is going to be reduced from five hundred and fifty ton tons per hour to four hundred tons per hour. So I, if I, if you don't mind, if I can let
No.
Somebody who knows what they're talking about, about asphalt plants, answer the question, it would be great.
I know absolutely nothing about asphalt plants. I'm just saying, if I lived around there, I would probably say, good, they're, they're reducing the production.
Yes.
Modern, and I'm sure somebody's going to tell us it's making it quieter and more efficient and less polluting.
All of that.
And just, and I, I get that and that's why you modernize. Is there some sort of documentation that you have engineering reports, something that confirms that?
Well, I'm gonna let the, the experts answer that if that's okay. Okay, that would be great.
Just before you go, the decrease in production, does that equate then into also less trips in and out of the site?
Well, again, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna, well, the answer to it is definitely yes, but it's not just because of the production, the amount of production and storage. It's also because the train siding has been rehabilitated to bring aggregate in. So it reduces, well, it brings, the materials are coming in rather than coming in on the, by truck and over the roads. They'll actually come in by rail. So that's reducing, significantly reducing the amount of trucks on the road. So that, that's also very important. And, and also to the point.
I didn't interrupt you, but since you, I saw that, I read through this and it said they will be reduced by using the siding. Some four thousand trucks per year.
Per year.
Is that, save that for your expert?
Yes, yes, again, yeah, yes. And just before I go on, I, one point that I'd like to make since we're talking about this and like you said, it sounds like it's something positive. I can tell you that we did have a, we hosted Basilico and the consultants, consultants hosted a Zoom meeting last Monday, I think it was the twentieth of September. And it was well attended. I think there were sixty three participants. And generally speaking, you know, as people were logging off, they were actually, you know, sending something in the little chat function, you know, thanking Basilico for bringing the information to them and explaining what they want to do. And a lot of the comments seemed positive. In fact, there was a letter today or an email that was sent to the board that also said the same thing, that they thought that the presentation was positive and that the movement towards consolidating this plant and the upgrades were a positive, you know, were a positive thing. So.
Is there some agency of the town that has or will set the cap on production? So that, yes, this year we reduce it by thirty one percent, but over the next five years it's going to get greater. Who monitors that? Who is in charge from the town to ensure that production doesn't?
Well, again, I'm gonna, because I think it's a function of production, when you produce it, you have to store it. So there's only so much storage on the site. So you can't just keep making it. You have to place it somewhere. So again, somebody who knows about the operations, I'm gonna do that if that's okay. When we, when we submitted our application originally, we submitted actually a set of plans to the building department. And the building department came back with an email and at the time it was Mr. Bernardi, who I know is no longer with the town. But his email, which I attached here, he acknowledged that the use is being made less intensive. So I thought that was very positive. He still suggested that we seek a change of zone. But his point was that he recognized that we are modernizing the plant and he also recognized that it is less intensive. So legally, I would say that, you know, that we're within the rights of a nonconforming use.
I'm sorry, one of the, is this a special exception application?
It is.
Just so the record, I know you're going to get to it, but so we have to on the record, what is the burden of the applicant? Or what are, what presumptions exist when it's a special use exception?
A special use exception, the courts have said many, many times, and I don't mean to cite courts, but just courts repeatedly have said, special use is tantamount to a permitted use, provided that the use complies with all of the conditions. And I'm going to get to that later, that I'm going to demonstrate how we do comply with all of the special use provisions and requirements. What's that?
Don't cite Ternick versus McGowan.
I'm not, I'm not. And but, but the standard also is, is much less than it is even for an area variance, which is not that, you know, a high burden to, to meet. So I do want to point that we're not proposing any changes to the concrete batching plant. That's, I just want to clarify that. We're just looking to consolidate two asphalt plants, the one, and make improvements to asphalt.
So.
So we would, I'm sorry.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yeah.
The concrete batching plant, is that, is that the plant that possibly produces more dust and matter that could be not asphalt? I don't know anything about that, making asphalt, so.
I have to, neither do I. Unfortunately, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's, I'm well armed with experts, I can tell you that because I know what I don't know. So we did leave the special exception. I just would point out, and again, I don't want to, I don't want to be argumentative in any way. Obviously, we're here making, asking for the special exception. I don't even think we're supposed to be here for a special exception because of the fact that we're legal nonconforming use. The, the code section that was cited was sixty eight four fifteen A. But the language of that makes it clear, at least to me, that it only applies in the case of reconstruction of a nonconforming use or an extension of a nonconforming use. I don't believe it applied. What's that?
You are reconstructing.
Well, no, no, but if you, if you look at the sections that it refers to for reconstruction.
Well taken, but, but I, I don't think it's a stretch to say you're reconstructing.
No, no, but, but just to follow up on my point, the reconstruction that's referred to in that section, it refers you to another section?
Yeah.
It talks about fire, more than fifty percent damage. None of those things apply. This is just, I want to make it better.
This is just the record.
It's just like, there's a rusty piece of equipment, we want to put a new piece of equipment that's quieter and, and emits less, you know, emissions and noise, et cetera. So, you know, so again, we're not doing any of those things, but I just wanted to put that on there, on the record. But we're here, we're asking, I believe that we are going to be able to, to, to demonstrate, I'm certain we'll be able to demonstrate the special exception criteria has been met. So then we go to the variance relief that we're asking for. So it's eleven, it's eleven accessory structures. That's the way the application was denied. However, a lot of this stuff is equipment. Like, we're being denied for a motor, for a conveyor belt. Like, I don't think these things are even buildings. I don't think the structures, some of them, some of them are. The silo is a structure, but I don't think a belt is a structure. I don't think a, a bag.
Under our code, structure is a very loose definition. It's a, some of component parts is basically how the code reads. So it's hard not to have a structure if you have a screw and a bolt. I mean, I'm taking to a logical conclusion.
I do generally agree with you, Mr. Messina, except that there are, there's also a provision in the town code that says certain things that get mounted on the top of structures are like permitted appurtenances and they're permissible. And they don't trigger like a, like a refrigeration unit. So, you know, here I have a bag that's on top that collects dust. I have a motor that runs the conveyor belt. You know, again, we're here, I'm not saying that, you know, we're here because they asked us to come here for everything, but I just asked the board to, it looks worse than it is. Looks like we need eleven things. I don't think we need eleven, but we're going to ask for all of them. The other point I want to make out, I, I want to make to the board is that they were all flagged as accessory uses. I think the asphalt plant's the primary use. So if the, if the asphalt plant and the equipment is the primary use, the height's sixty feet or four stories. So yes, I still need variances for a couple of these things. A lot of them I wouldn't need variances for, but I only need it for a couple. And the ones I need it for are very modest because you'd be allowed to go to, to sixty. The way it was, it was denied, they said everything was accessory. Of course, it can only be eighteen feet, so everything looks like it's much worse. But I don't think that's actually the case here. So I think in the denial letter, I don't, you know, you know, there's like a belt feed deck, a bag house exhaust, a wrap belt, I don't even know what some of these things are, tanks. The silo is, is something, I think, you know, I mentioned the motor. The silo, I think, is, is significant to discuss because the proposed height of the silo is fifty eight point nine one. I think it's fifty eight feet, eleven inches is what it comes out to be. And there's a comparison chart in your booklet at exhibit nine. I think that's an important one to look at. And you'll see what we're proposing versus what's there. And it's about the same height. It's slightly taller and if you add the motor on top, it gets, it gets taller, but that's a.
What's the greatest height variance in this application? What's the top?
Well, again, well, they're, they're saying that we need eighty feet, eighty point one six feet, but it's for a motor. It's the motor that's, that's connected to the top. So that's, you know, I don't know how big it is, but it's, you know, in relation to the silo, it's not the bulk of the, of the structure.
If you take away the motor, does the silo conform or is it?
It can't. Supposed to be at eighteen feet. Just by its nature, it's an asphalt plant.
But there are two existing silos that are approximately the same height of the base of the new silo.
They're, they're, they're almost the same height as what we're asking for. Yes, exactly. So, you know, and I think there are other, I, I know that there are other pieces on the, of equipment that are on, on the site that are at about the same height. Some of them a little taller, some of them a little shorter, but I didn't want to go into, you know, because we're talking inches or a couple of feet.
There's an existing three silo you have on the chart that it looks like appears to be some sort of motor up top that is almost the same height as the new silo.
Yep, 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 exactly.
And what about the concrete plant? What's the height on that?
Well, we're not, we're not, I don't, do anybody know what the height of the concrete plant is? It's not part of the, but I, I don't.
I understand it's not part of the application, but it's on the site. I mean, you're saying that, that the primary use is the asphalt, then what is the concrete use? Is that not a primary?
Well, it's, it's materials production. I don't know if you'd say, if you split it down to say, well, it's asphalt versus concrete. What's that?
It's not a primary use?
What the?
Of course it is. It's a primary use.
Well, if, well, if the asphalt plant is a primary use, then the concrete plant would be a primary use as well. I would agree.
Can you have two primary uses on the same?
Yeah, but it's, but I, what's the use? The use is, you know, materials, you know, manufacturer or materials batching.
Siding, the lower siding existing, does it have to be modified?
It's existing, but is it, is it been refurbished? Okay, I apologize, I need to.
Is it in use now or is it going to be put in use with the refurbishment?
Nope, it's in use now.
We may want to get his name.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, yes. Do you have more question? I'll ask Thomas to come up. Or do you want to wait? Okay. Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap it up in a minute here. And then the last thing I just have to touch on is that there was a variance that's being asked for, for a retaining wall and retaining wall has, is part of the berm. So it holds up the berm. And retaining wall will be nine feet in height, but then there's going to be a fence on top of it. That's another six feet. So the total height is fifteen feet. So you're only allowed to have a fence and the wall being six feet. So we exceed, but that's, that's really for the benefit of the, of the community. We're trying to shield as much as we can of the, of the activities. Yes.
One other, maybe not one other question, but planning.
Yes.
This has gone through planning and, uh, planning departments have listed or?
I, I, I don't know.
Will it have to go through planning or?
Well, it's going to have to go through some kind of site review. Yes, it will.
Review and engineering?
Yes, yeah, it will. It will once we, yeah.
This is also for the public. This still has to go through a whole lot of town inspections.
That's correct.
For various departments.
That's correct. That's correct. Okay.
We have no control over.
Right, right, right. So just the, I also want to just point out for record, I'm glad we're not talking about it, but just, you know, this seems to always be, and it was a lot on the Zoom call, that people want to discuss the neighboring ten acre piece, which was the battery storage site, not part of this application. Yes, an affiliated company owns it, not going to be used for this. We're not doing anything with that. No plans for it.
We just had that for us and we denied it. Where is that relative?
Right, to the west. You want to point that out? I'm sorry.
So what is that used for?
It's just, it's been remediated and it's still being remediated. Right now it's vacant and it's not being used for anything. It was going to, we were hoping it was going to be used for a battery storage facility, but what's that? An affiliate of Basilico. Yes, yeah, but again.
We're not, we're not here for that.
Not here for that, exactly. I just wanted to make that clear. There are the residential developments. I know there are neighbors who are concerned and rightfully so. You can see them here on the, on the, on the aerial. You have the two developments, the one that's to the bottom right was, looks like it was built according to the historic aerials in the eighties. And then in the early nineties, you have the colony directly across the street. That is a multifamily condominium complex. I think it's about three hundred, three hundred and fifteen units. Yes.
I'm sorry, but will this refurbishment make the process quieter?
Yes, yes.
Can you tell me how much, whether it's decibels or?
I don't know. I don't know if the expert can, can talk about that, but I know he can say it's quieter. I don't know if he'll give you the decimal amount. But I do want to point out, and I think I mentioned it before, you know, when the town board approved, remember this is a C A zone, the colony. So in the mid nineties or early nineties, I should say, when the town board approved that development, obviously the plant was there. It, it, it determined that presumably, right, because it has to be determined to be appropriate and consistent with the comprehensive plan. I think that the, the issue, the bigger issue is that they didn't, they should have left more of a buffer to the south.
You know, Mr. Guardino?
Yes.
An eminent member of the planning department from them is sitting on this table.
Okay.
And the town attorney at the time is sitting on this table. So I don't know if you think it's prudent to call out what you believe are mistakes in connection with that development.
You never know.
Carefully, sir.
I will, I will. I, I appreciate the comment, but I just, I, you know, I think in a, in a perfect world, let me say it that way. In a perfect world, you know, knowing what we know today, it would have been better if we had more. Let's put it that way, but, but.
It might also have been better had the town aggressively sought the closure of the plant.
It couldn't.
We can speculate as to all kinds.
But it couldn't.
Why did the town allow building a residential so close, knowing that, that those people would then complain later on, not, not originally, but later on? Why'd they allow it so close? First of all, people have a right to use their property. And second of all, if you want to know why they did it, you have to ask them. There's five members of the town board, a couple of them are still alive. If you can trace them down and ask them what they were thinking.
I thought maybe you knew the.
I, I did not, although, you know, it was a, you know, that property was owned in a manner that the town board in its collective wisdom believed that this was an appropriate use and probably better than some of the other potential. That sets up the dilemma that we find ourselves in.
That's, that's my only point. I'm not trying to be critical of anyone. I just, but I do want to point out that we're going to increase the separation because we can't fix the south.
I do want to say one thing.
Yes.
I know there's some members of the community, I'm assuming they're members of the community in this area, and they seem a little they want to speak about it, but you'll have your chance to speak. Please don't shoot comments up by their door because the record does not rec, properly reflect that. So you'll have plenty of time to speak and give your information and input in it once they're done with their application.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So I, what I wanted to point out, and you could probably see it better from the site plan, but as the, again, I think I mentioned it, as the plant consolidates, we're pulling it further away. So we can't fix the south side of the road. We can fix the north side of the road by moving it further away and we can also add the berm. You know, or continue the berm, make it better, enhance the plantings on it. So there's a, I think at exhibit nine.
Whose suggestion is the berm?
Well, it was originally the town's, but, but it's our people want to enhance the berm. Listen, you, you know, you know, Mr. Wexler, it's you're better off addressing the concerns of the community as best you can. And that's what my client wants to do and.
You're mitigating visually.
Mitigating, right, and, and noise and dust and all of that. So, you know, if you don't see it and you don't hear it, that's a good thing for them. You know, for, with them being Basilico. So like I said, so it, that, oh, it's actually exhibit eleven. And you can see that the berm, right now, this is the existing condition because there's an opening in front of the building. And what we're proposing there is to, is to put a berm across the whole front. So, I mean, I, I think that's a much nicer look in, in my opinion. And I'm hoping the neighbors will, will think that too. So, so as I just wrap up here.
Do you know what it looks like?
What's that? What's that?
Here, why not?
Well, we did show it on the, I'd be happy to hand it to them. You want it?
Yeah, why not?
Yeah, please. We can hand you one.
We'll bring it over to you, man.
Yeah, we'll bring it to you.
Why don't you, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, wait, wait, wait. Why don't you pass around one of the booklets?
I'm fine.
So you can look at it. I didn't go to law school for that, but it's interesting. Look at number eleven. It's all those years as a judge, Mr. Wexler. And then pass it around, please.
Thank you. So, um, just, I will fi- finish up, I just want to talk about two things. They passed improvements because we've done some already, and I think that's really important, and it goes to uh, demonstrating what a, what a good corporate citizen and a good neighbor Basilico has been. Um, you know, after, uh, since nineteen, uh, since twenty seventeen and when it bought this plant. So, if you look at it-
I didn't even get enough due again, but they bought the plant in twenty seventeen. There was a predecessor owner, okay. I'm just preempting that, again, this is for the public. I think if people have complaints, I think it's fair to say that it was a different owner. So I'm, I'm just presaging that they're gonna say this place has been a disaster for the last thirty years. And you, I'm just learning right now, so Basilico bought this from some entity in two thousand and seventeen.
Yeah, that's, thank you, and that's exactly right. Exhibit ten, the second page is a, has a, like a before and after photograph. So, uh, Basilico removed and disposed of over fifty old vehicles and equipment on the site, went after it bought it. Um, it removed four, uh, old noisy and inefficient generators that were on the property, they're gone. I mentioned earlier about the radio antenna, that's gone. Um, they performed some landscape maintenance along the, uh, along Furrows Road. They now utilize a water truck on site to minimize any dust, airborne matter. Um, they also utilize a sweeper to minimize dust on the site, so if it's not on the site, it can't become airborne. Um, they reduced material storage by seventy-eight percent, that's the supply storage. Um, they've reduced the amount of recycled concrete that was on the site by ninety percent, from seventy-five thousand cubic yards to seventy-five hundred cubic yards, and also reduced the amount of recycled asphalt that was stored on the site by sixty percent, from fifty thousand cubic yards to twenty thousand cubic yards. They've also, as I mentioned, rehabilitated the rail siding, um, and that, you know, now about eighty percent of the aggregate and other materials come in by rail, reduces truck traffic significantly. If this application is approved, Basilico will make another, uh, uh, make other improvements to the site, including installing the upgraded technology to reduce the exhaust at the top of the silos. It is going to remove three thirty thousand gallon above gr- uh, ground propane tanks, there's a picture in your book. They're, they're not the most beautiful thing in the world, they're all coming off the site. They will extend and enhance the berm and the landscaping on the berm along Furrows Road, and that's the exhibit we just talked about. They're going to pave the internal roadways, they will provide new stormwater collection systems, and they, stormwater collection systems, and they will reduce the number of air emission points by sixty-six percent from three points into one point.
So can I ask you, since your client purchased the property in twenty seventeen, has it been issued any violations?
I don't, well, I don't believe there's anything pending now, Thomas, it's, I guess it's your turn, you, you want to come up anyway, and so I was gonna introduce Thomas Basilico. Um, he's gonna explain the existing and the proposed components and the upgraded, uh-
But the question was from our vice chairman, it was nuanced. It wasn't, the question was, was there any, not whether there are any pending?
No, I, I understand, I understand, I, I wasn't, I wasn't around, you know, so I don't, I wish, I wish I could answer.
Thomas Basilico, uh, twelve Sheep Lane, Locust Valley, New York.
How are you doing, sir?
Good. Uh, violations, we've had no town violations, we had one minor Suffolk County tank-
No, I wasn't asking about that, I was asking about the fence, so, yeah, thank you.
So as an-
I'm sorry. I, I, all I'm doing is really illustrating Mr. Wexler's point from earlier, that, you know, you, the ownership, since the ownership a few years ago, as I understand it, there has been a marked improvement about the site.
I'd like to think we've done a much better job compared to our predecessors, and I think we've-
No, no, if I may, Mr. Jim, can I ask you to do me a favor, the board and, and the audience here, they're all concerned citizens. I understand this, and we all do, that this is modernization of a plant, okay? Would you explain to me and also for the board and the members, not that, oh yeah, we're going to make it quieter, beautiful, better, and that's not really going to happen, what is the concreteness, no pun intended, that this is real? In other words, can you give us stuff to say, yeah, it's going to be quieter, this is why, and this is how it's going to be monitored? It's going to be smaller by this percent, something real, not just, oh, it's going to be wonderful. Because if I was sitting out there, I would say they're saying it, but I don't necessarily believe it. Show me the stuff.
The, the biggest reduction, obviously, fifty-eight percent, we're going further away from Furrows Road by thirty feet. The silos are going further away, the whole plant's going further away. We are proposing the berm, which is an extension of the existing berm across the whole front, which will decrease noise undoubtedly, because it's gonna be fifteen, uh, nine plus six with slats and then trees, so that-
Is the equipment quieter, and if it is, what do you have to demonstrate it other than, oh, just believe me, I, I would mind you?
I don't have, we don't have specific decibel counts, but if you see some of the pictures, the equipment's from sixties, seventies, um, we could keep, we could keep it if we had to. The biggest thing is we are gonna take two plants with two emission points, two D, uh, D E C emission points. We're gonna eliminate one, because honestly, in our, the way we operate, we don't need the two, so why not? The old guys held on to two, because always have two, because keep two, you never know. We're saying, let's get rid of one, get rid of the emission point, we'll keep the one plant at four hundred tons per hour. Right now, we have, there's two plants, one at four hundred tons per hour and one at a hundred fifty tons per hour. So we're gonna have one plant, four hundred tons per hour, we're gonna move it away, we're gonna build the berm.
Are you saying because it's more modern, it's quieter, like more modern, a, a new car is quieter than-
Right, the, the, the silos, the, the, these silos here, those are from the sixty-five. They have these clam shells, things that bang and slam, and those are really the, they're the loudest point on the plant, the new plant will not have those, it's a different technology completely, and it's a, uh, it's a different gate, single, single clam shell that opens on the bottom and shuts. Um, that would be significantly quieter. The rest of the plant will be an upgraded burner, um-
And what does that mean to these people who live around you?
Slightly less knocks, it goes, slightly next knocks going in the air, but again, right now, the plants meets the D E C emissions, so right now, it's fine the way it is.
Obviously, right now, it complies with the county code with noise and all of that stuff.
Correct, so, again, we're just trying to make it better. We can keep going the way it is, but honestly, it's not-
Your attorney also pointed out that your emissions were being reduced by what, two-thirds, is that what it hurts?
You're, we're gonna eliminate one plant, that eliminates a whole emission point, and we're eliminating a generator emission point, so now we'll have, we have three D E C emission points technically going forward, we will have one emission point, which will be significantly less going forward.
Thank you. That's a measurable, quantifiable thing.
And you, you are an engineer by trade, architect, I'm trying to figure out what your background is.
No, I've, I'm a Basilico, I've, I've been, I ran the payload when I was twelve years old, that we have an asphalt plant in Farmingdale, I'm in char- I'm the, uh, materials division manager, we have two asphalt plants on the island, I run them. I've been working in the asphalt plant for thirty, yeah, you could say that. I, I went to, I, I graduated with a business degree, I'm one of the few without the engineering degree, but I've been around it for a long time. The berm, I, I, the berm is, to me, is good for everybody, it helps keep noise out, and I think it looks better for the neighbors. I don't see an, an issue with that, and by having the newer silos, the newer silos have better technology. They allow you to store material for up to almost four days, so we could make material on a Friday afternoon, ship it out early Monday morning, and you're not gonna start the plant up, instead of starting the plant up at five in the morning, you don't have to, because we'll have, you, you'd be able to store the material and load it out, rather than have to crank up the old plant to get it going, because the old silos couldn't actually store material because they're antiquated. And really, from all the people I've talked to, we're the last people in the United States that have these old square silos that are gigantic and square.
I have one question for you, Mr. Basilico. You're combining, uh, the three silos, if I'm saying it correctly, into one. What are you doing with that land?
It's, you're not combining, so there's, there's, there's a total of five silos on the plant, there's three of the giant square ones, and then there's two smaller round ones. We're, we're putting five new round ones that are actually, uh, a little less in total storage. Um, they will be in a line.
So will the land is still gonna be occupied, it's occupied now?
It's gonna be a little further back, it's gonna be, uh, and then as you see, we, we propose putting, painting them forest green, because I think it's a little bit better on the eye.
Sure.
We could paint it any color we want, actually, but I think the forest green is a good look.
So in order for you to modernize the plant, you need these variances.
Correct.
And by granting the variances, you can modernize the plant and move it, get the berm, make it quieter, more efficient, and all those good things.
Or we leave what we have and we kind of try and piecemeal it the way it is, which is kind of silly, but that's, that's how we'd have to do it if, if we didn't get the night.
Is this the direction the town would want all business to go? Become more efficient, quieter, and that seems to me, but okay, thank you.
Um, they, they spoke about, I mean, some of the big things we did since we took over, when we took over, they had the, the recycling permit they had on site was three hundred and forty thousand yards of material, which is outrageous sum of material. We took over, we renegotiated with the D E C, we have a seventy-five thousand yard permit now on site, so we reduced that by seventy-eight percent. Again, like Anthony said, water truck, we do, we do, uh, biweekly inspections internally, uh, sweeper, um, I think we've been a better neighbor since we took over. Yeah, this is third generation, uh, we just had our seventy-fifth anniversary.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Who's the next expert that would like to be here? Or Mr. Wardino, when I come through.
We have Bob Keen here, it's our compliance expert.
Mr. Wardino, do you have an engineering degree?
I do not, can't you tell? What's that?
What's your degree?
Uh, well, it's environmental studies and I have a master's degree in architecture and urban planning and dental logic. So, yeah, it's, uh, no engineering. Thanks, Bob.
Are you an engineer?
Um, I am.
And you admit to it?
I do admit to it, my kids make fun of me all the time. My name is Robert Keen, uh, my address is five Dock Lane in Port Washington. I've been with Basilico for about six years, I've been an environmental consultant for probably, I don't know, twenty-five years before that. I'm sorry, I forgot your typing, um, do you need me to repeat anything? Okay, so I was hired by Basilico to sort of work in, in-house as a engineer, professional engineer in New York, and I work with the environmental side. So right now, as they said when we purchased this, the D E C had a significant problem with the amount of storage that the previous owners had. We recognized that, we reduced it, we talked to them, as Thomas said, we dropped from three hundred and forty thousand cubic yards, and there's pictures, I think, in the exhibit showing a mountain of mole rock that was there.
Do me a favor, when I get the look from Natasha, I think she's good for four hundred words a minute, but she gives me the look, she's not getting what she's saying. Gotta slow down.
I'm sorry. In the past, so the D E C did not like the fact that the current, the previous owner had three hundred and forty thousand cubic yards of storage. When we took over, and there was also a gigantic pile that had to be cleaned up, left by the previous owner. So part of the negotiation to get our new permit was to remove the old pile, and also to, to, in order to transfer the permit, they would not transfer the permit until we negotiated, well, agreed to remove the existing pile on site and reduce the quantity down to seventy-five thousand cubic yards.
From three hundred and-
Three hundred and forty thousand. And I think one of the documents in the exhibits or one that we showed to the residents was there a New York Times article from nineteen ninety-nine that showed the, um, view of that facility with a giant mountain of mole rock that came from New York City. So we understand-
What did you do with all that material?
That was not us, that, oh, sorry.
Well, we sued them.
The material, the, the mole rock, I have no idea, that was the previous owner's, but the material that we had, we processed it in accord with our permit and removed it in accord with the D E C oversight. And New York State D E C does come out to our facility, um, I don't know the frequency, once a month, maybe, to do inspections. We've never had any violations with them.
They also check for odors, do they not, right?
On that form that they, they, they have a checklist, they go down, noxious odors, vermin, rats, whatever, dust, um-
So I think that kind of addresses your question, Mr. Wexler, who's policing it? It's the state D E C, and they have been for at least the last twenty years.
Correct.
They're not shy.
They're, they're, they are not shy. Another thing, when I joined Basilico, one of the things that they did internally was they developed a compliance program for all of their facilities, and when I started, we had four facilities, now we're up to almost ten, and we developed a biweekly inspection program, uh, program. So I have one of my people go out, um, she's an engineer, and she goes out to the facility every two weeks. We have a checklist of things that we look for with respect to air, with respect to, um, the storage, with respect to housekeeping, with respect to safety, to ensure that, I think Michael Basilico's motto is he wants to be inspection ready at any given time. So when these D E C inspectors do come in, we're checking for the same things, and if there are issues that we have internally, we tell the facility managers, they go about their business, they correct them. Um, and that's what, what we've been doing for the past six years since, well, since I've been here and since two thousand and seventeen, when we purchased the property.
And you've never had a D E C violation?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Um, we also have permits with Suffolk County for our tanks, we also have a, a permit for our air, and unlike our permit in Farmingdale, where we have a cap on the amount of asphalt we can, um, create, there is no cap on the material that we can create at this point, but we are in compliance. Any other questions?
I have no questions. Anyone have any questions? Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thomas Basilico, again, I, one item I wanted to add, we also, the new silos, we are planning to put in a, a exhaust system that will, uh, use a fan and suck exhaust from the top of the silos that comes off as you make material, it will suck the material down through the baghouse and get filtered and back up, so that's a current, that's not currently on, that's not actually needed for the D E C permit, but we're proposing that as an additional, uh, item. To have less exhaust at the top.
So that pretty much, um, well, let me, before I forget, hold on. He was asked, uh, we were asked early on to make sure that we address the criteria, so let me just, if I can briefly do that, just to complete the record. So, um, there are four findings that the board has to make, um, under the special permit, um, section of the town code. Uh, one is whether the use will not prevent, uh, or no, whether the use will prevent the orderly and reasonable use of adjacent properties. I would say no, uh, because the residential uses to the south were constructed, as I mentioned, many years after the asphalt plant, and the two uses have actually coexisted, uh, for thirty years. Uh, I know not, there's been complaints from time to time, but basically, they, they do seem to, to work together. And it's been better than now than it was when the other owner had the property. Um, and again, as I mentioned, uh, there are no outstanding violations on the site. The second one, I would say the use will not prevent the orderly and reasonable use of permitted or legally established uses in the district. Um, the asphalt and concrete plants are consistent with the other industrial uses in the town of Islip, and then just to point out, just to the north, actually, industrial and some heavy industrial on that side. So it's all part of one zone, but it happens to be in a second town. And again, they have coexisted, uh, the residential uses and the proposed, uh, and this, uh, facility have, uh, coexisted. Proposing improvements when they're complete, um, you know, I would say that the potential for adverse impacts will be significantly reduced. Uh, the third is, uh, I would say the health, safety, and welfare, comfort, and convenience and order of the town will not be adversely affected. If the application is approved and the number of asphalt plants is reduced from two to one, and the overall footprint is reduced by fifty-eight percent, and the new state-of-the-art equipment is installed, and Basilico makes the other site improvements that it has agreed to make, I would say that the health, safety, and welfare of the town will actually be enhanced. And then finally, with respect to special permit criteria, uh, I would say the use, uh, would be, uh, in harmony and promote the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. Uh, the existing plants are- Uh, the existing plants are legal non-conforming uses in one of the town's industrial zones, it's contiguous to the railroad tracks, adjacent to, uh, heavy industrial uses in the town of Brookhaven, um, and point out that the town code expressly states that legal non-conforming uses may be continued, so a smaller, more efficient, and technologically advanced plant that has moved further away from the residences will clearly, in my opinion, be more harmonious than the existing plant. And then getting to the area variance criteria, um, I would say that the grant of the variances will not result in an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood, because the existing plant can continue to operate as it is, as a legal non-conforming use, and the variances will allow for significant upgrades and improvements. The benefit that sought by Basilico cannot be achieved by some other feasible method, because the plant by its nature, as I mentioned, must utilize equipment that's tall, that's just the nature of the, of the use. While the requested variances would appear substantial on their face, uh, the existing equipment that's on the site is used in connection with this legal non-conforming use is at similar heights, so it's not, you know, it looks like a lot, but it's already there. It's not like we're adding anything, uh, significant. And then the proposed variances will not have an adverse, uh, effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, um, because this site is already fully developed with a larger asphalt plant, uh, than, uh, that is permitted to operate. And then finally, the alleged difficulty, I would say, is self-created, but only to the extent that Basilico was aware that it would need variances in order to upgrade the plant. And in any event, as the board knows, the finding is not dispositive, uh, finding of self-created hardship is not dispositive. So that concludes my presentation. Um, I'd like to reserve the ability to answer questions, you know, without the public mate-
Once they're done?
-when they're done, yes. Thank you so much.
Can I just make one quick note? Again, this is for everybody here. If we were to deny this application, this is not like you want to build this and start it, this is here.
Right.
If we were to deny it, you just continue lawfully, not as, not as environmentally friendly, but you would continue.
Exactly. That's exactly it.
If we deny it, this will now go away and they're going to build a gorgeous park.
Somewhat unique case. This is a unique case. Thank you.
Wouldn't be crushed by our denial. Before we, uh, have the public session come up and speak, I want to give Deidre from planning, um, an opportunity to give their opinion, or you don't have an opinion, or what?
So what you're saying is there's a tension between improvement-
Right.
and what you believe that it should be all or nothing. Either you're non-conforming or you don't exist, right? Well, no, it, okay, that's how the code reads, but is that, you've heard me say this before, is that the spirit of the code? What, what really the code seeks and the law seeks is the, the, uh, for non-conforming uses to be extinguished over time, right? But if it's incremental, isn't that better than encouraging, you know, what is clearly, uh, I don't want to call it a nuisance, but, you know, certainly more of a disruptor in the community?
But it's not incremental or it's a whole entire set of string.
Well, it's not.
It's not the whole entire set of string. They're not taking down all the silos.
And they're not taking down the concrete plant either.
They're not taking down-
But no, I mean, uh, we, we're not arguing with you, we're having an intellectual discussion.
Yeah.
Right. But it's a big change in the right direction. And again, it may-
How long have they been non-conforming?
I know, but can I-
Is it though? Wouldn't the non-conformity continue to exist just in a worse state if you didn't grant the relief? And I'm not saying we are or we aren't, or that I've even made up my mind, but what I'm saying is, if you think about it, you know, you, you'd rather have something come closer to conformity, in environmentally better condition, and yeah, it may take a little while longer, but it sure beats what's there now.
Can I ask you a question, again, following up on our chairman or vice chairman? Does the, actually, I'm assuming you used a great term, there's a tension in the code. I'm trying to wrap my thoughts around, does the code intuit, or does the code understand that this situation is a little unique? It's not like we're phasing out bungalows that are on 20 by 50 feet of property, and that is what the code seeks to do, is get rid of those bungalows when the last one goes goodbye. This is an existing use, it's not going anywhere, and it, they want to, as they say, make it more better. Does the code, and again, it's a non-conformity, and they need to increase it, does the code anticipate that with a big, with that in mind, or? So isn't this what the town, isn't this what the town wants? It's, this is an industrial area, it's the most owned and used there is, and this predated the homes. As I said before, why they let them build so closely, who knows, but is this what the town wants?
But for them- Right. So again, going back to what we were saying, your view is all or nothing, and it doesn't really acknowledge an incremental, right? I thi- I think our secretary, who happens to have a master's degree in planning, might want to chip in a little bit. So, Ms. Becero?
Yeah. Well, it's, it's understood that planning's concern is that we'll foster the use, uh, for another hundred years, and does the law want us to do that on non-conforming uses? Or does the law want us to phase them out over time?
Can I ask a question? You guys, it would be for one second. That plant, the way it's right now, can last another hundred years with no problem.
So maybe we, maybe we, maybe we see if that's the case. I think that's what the law would say. It's, is it-
So like, tell me, come back and-
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to explain planning's position. Planning's position is not a surprise, right? Uh, it's, it's a reconstruction of a non-conforming use. So I guess the question is, is it routine maintenance, or is it reconstructing the non-conforming use?
It's definitely, I mean, I think it's, in my mind, it's definitely reconstruction. I don't disagree with it.
Right. And we've heard that, and that's why we had the hearing.
Reconstruction, but is it reconstruction in the direction we would like to see business go? I think that's the bottom line. It's down the hall and to the right.
Can I just address that? I know I said I would wait, but can I address that, that legal-
Uh, wait till the end, come on, we'll get your chance at the end. Let these people be heard, they're dying.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? I'm gonna, I know you all want to be heard. You got to come up one at a time, speak clearly, name an address for the record, please, so we can do this smoothly.
Ma'am, I'm just gonna warn you, don't make it- ma'am, I'm just gonna warn you, don't make any aspersions about where I am on Saturday night, like you did on the Zoom meeting, all right?
Hello, my name is Carmela Richetti.
Something like that.
Okay, now church, we don't have to. It, my name is Carmela Richetti, R-I-C-H-E-T-T-I. I live at 232 Fifth Field Drive in the Colony. Uh, it, it's just not the Colony that isn't complaining about this issue right now. Uh, it's an improvement, and it sounds really good, but from what I heard, it's six days a week, and it can be at night. The noise level is what most people are concerned with, not only the air quality. They say it's going to be okay, but we have learned in the past, when we have complained to Basilico, that the smell was horrendous, and I don't think just a burn is going to satisfy the noise level, the smell, and any other air quality. Now, when you have people who have passed for cancer, for environmental reasons, this is why we're concerned.
But just, I, I don't need to interrupt you, but they must comply with D E C and county, so-
I wish I could believe that. The land that's vacant, that hasn't gotten clearance yet, that was mined, and it never got stopped until they mined it to a point where they made so much money and the fine did not equal the profit. This goes on in life. This is a known thing that happens. As far as the col-, it's not just the Colony that was allowed to build its Somerset. One people on Trailblazer called us in the middle of the night, and because Senator Boyle sent somebody, we were able to stop the lithium battery storage place because they were mining the land. This goes on, and this is deteriorating. This, it seems like an improvement, and I wish and hope I could believe that, but who is going to be their watchdog? Just who?
The county?
In Islip.
What are you gonna say?
Yes. Not under my jurisdiction, Bologna, Angie Carpenter, of course, so many, for so many reasons, but there, it's not under their jurisdiction or whatever. So that's why we need to be careful on giving them this application, because what about that other land, which is directly across from us? What about a wall? When Sovion was gonna build the other thing, he was gonna build an 18-foot wall for sound, and yet the sound from lithium batteries was even greater than that. I know that's not the issue, but now I just want to make sure environmentally, with all that is going on, when you have lost someone with environmental cancer, that this is not one of those situations. They say they're improving, but how do we know it's an improvement?
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to see you again.
Be careful walking over there. Next up, name an address for the record, please, if you could speak slowly and clearly. Appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Christina Pascal, last name is P-A-S-C-A-L-E. I, I purchased a home in April, my address is 123 Colony Drive, Holbrook, New York, 11741. I, um, I purchased a home in April, and I, I knew that there was a facility across the street, but I had the understanding that it was a Zone 1 industrial space. I, I didn't understand that there were exceptions, that there were these contingencies that were being allowed in, that really maybe are not appropriate for raising a young family near such, uh, an industrial site that is producing, for better or worse, you know, harmful pollutants, air pollutants. I know that I've reviewed their plan, and I don't really fully understand it, because that's not my area of expertise, but my concern is, is that it looks as though that their existing silos do not allow for storage, and this is creating an issue for them because of future productions, and that they're wanting to move those silos, create new silos that allow for storage, and move them closer to the train tracks so that they can move that product quicker in and out of the area by not using trucks, but using the train. And so that they can essentially start to produce more because they can have more storage, and then they can move that product quicker on and off the trains. I don't think they ever needed the second production asphalt, it was really a backup because they didn't have the, the capacity to provide storage to meet their delivery demands. And so now I feel like, yeah, they say, yeah, let's get rid of it, because now we have more storage capacity. So I know that they've said that their production is going to be reduced, but I do wonder about why then to have it built into their plan to have more storage space? And also, why is there a, a need? I, I can see why, I can, that's how I'm seeing the future, that's how I'm seeing why this plan is working for them for future profits. And I also have the concern that if this is their future plan, is, if this is be, if this is a part of their business model, is that meaning that in a hundred years, as we say, because, you know, we could say, oh, this factory could be here for another hundred years?
That was an example, right?
Yes, but I'm just saying that what is their production level going to be? We are modern, they are modernizing it, and their purposes for modernizing it, I don't think are solely, you know, solely to make Holbrook a better world, you know?
Let's assume that's true. Let's assume that's true. Would you rather see what's there continue now, or would you rather see what's proposed? Given a choice?
So I'd rather it stay because-
No, 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 you have two choices.
I did. I said I would rather it continue as it is now, because its storage capacity is limited, meaning that they can only produce so much, they can't store it, and they've already been denied storing, they, they've passed, as they just said, they applied to have storage facilities built so that they could store more on the facility, but that wasn't approved, so-
No, that, I think, that was the, I think that was the predecessor.
That was the predecessor, that's what I mean, that that-
They were stored, I don't think that was storage for mater-
For materials, because they don't need it, because it comes in on the trains.
I, I thank you for being candid.
Yes.
Your question, because we get to question representatives and their attorneys, is your question, and it's a good question, by allowing this, we know it's going to be wonderful for the environment, as they say, and, and again, I, I only know what they tell us in this genre, but is your question, will this allow them to produce a greater quantity of asphalt? Is that one of your concerns?
Yes, theoretically.
No, that's a good question. I, I was trying to get the answer to that when we originally began, but I will re-ask that for you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good night. Who is next? Please, name an address for the record. Speak slowly, don't trip, coming up here, please, it's-
Hi, my name is Diane Marascia, M-A-R-A-S-C-I-A. I'm a resident at 108 Colony Drive. You know, it sounds wonderful, I love the question you just asked, because I would never have thought to ask that question. Um, I've lived there for two years. Um, I'm, I really have been trying to make sense of what's going on across the street for two years. They sound like they mean very well, and maybe they do. I know when I heard that there was gonna be a request for a rezoning, because they wanted that land to be identified as a utility, so they could put 525 lithium batteries.
We're not here for that, ma'am.
I know that, I know that, but there is a, a loss of confidence, because would you want to live across the street from that and raise your family? When the fire department wasn't even advised or asked, what would they do if we had a runaway fire? So it sounds good, and by profession, I'm a therapist, so I have no idea what you're all talking about, to be honest with you, I'll be very humble. And I have to rely on you people to protect me.
We all seem well-adjusted to you.
I, I would have to do a whole lot more thorough assessing. You make me nervous when you start giggling with that guy, though, I'll tell you that right now. Um, my first question is, will that plant run all night? When they make it more efficient, is that gonna be like an ongoing event that happens? That's number one. Number two, how long is this construction gonna take, and what is going to be the interruption in our peace and well-being across the street? Somebody mentioned, it's not just the Colony, it's Somerset, it's New England Village, it's, um, I don't know what it's called, to the side, there's the post office. Okay, and then on the other side, it's Peachtree Lane, which is like, you know, million-dollar homes. So we're talking about a lot of residential property that is impacted.
So not, not interrupt, but our, you know, there are standards for construction and when it can be done, and mitigation that has to be in place, that's done and checked by the engineering department and the building department, so that's unfortunately not within our-
Okay, I'm just, my concern is, again, um, I can only know what I know as what I do for a living and living there. Who, who is going to monitor this? Is the board gonna monitor it? If D E C finds a problem, if the town finds a problem, if the engineering department finds a problem, how are we ever gonna know? Um, how does that information get filtered down to the residents so that we can follow up? I, I feel like we're at such a loss here, and I don't know how to proceed with any of it. I know that I've heard explosions in the middle of the night from across the street, two in the morning, three in the morning. Somebody said, you know, call the town. Who's gonna answer me at three in the morning? And if I call at nine in the morning, I mean, at that- And if I call at nine in the morning, I mean, at that point, it's meaningless. Like, what do you do with this information? I, you know what I would like to propose? I would love to see this, what's like back there. Could we have a committee, town, residents, them? Let's do like a little visit of the plant, a site visit. What's there now? And show me what you're proposing. I'm a visual person. A lot of this makes no sense to me.
And you can definitely contact your neighbors and if they would like to have you on the site to see the visual plan. That's what you guys can talk about it and propose. We here as a zoning board just to, the application is in front of us. That's it. So that's all we're looking at. I appreciate that. That's wonderful, but that's something you'd have to discuss with them. We as a zoning board are not going to go out for a site visit with you and the board to talk about.
What about the town or the D?
We're not the town board. We strongly encourage applicants to speak to neighbors. And I think Mr. Gordino said there was a Zoom meeting. Maybe if you ask him after the meeting, if you could, and with some of your neighbors or maybe individually, whichever, arrange for something like that. I wouldn't be surprised if he said yes.
Okay, we could try that.
And you can also analyze it.
That's what I was trying to say, but I think I'm not as proficient as Mr. Macedo.
Would the construction be monitored by anybody from the town?
It has to be.
Okay, and would this plant run all night?
We'll find out. They're going to come back up and answer all your questions.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Come on up, name an address for the record. Please speak clearly and slow. Will you get yelled at by that?
I'm Elisa Caspari, C A S P A R E. And I live at 133 Fairfield, Holbrook, okay.
Can I ask what community that's in?
That's at the colony.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Fairfield's in the colony as well.
I lived in Holbrook for 55 years and that was a new one.
Oh, really? Yeah. So some of my, I've been there for over 20 years. So one of the negative experiences from living there, I'm not on the road where I hear the noise or the smell, although occasionally I can open the door and smell it. Especially now that I'm working at home with the pandemic, I get to utilize my home and I go, yeah, that kind of does stink. Is that the road runoff? We get this flooding in the front of the entrance and we usually get it fixed up pretty quickly. And it's to my knowledge, it's caused from the dust from the plant. I could be wrong.
The dust clogs the drainage system on the road?
Because we always have that water buildup where we can't get through the front. So that's one of the negative effects from this facility. What could be some other negative effects that could be an outcome from this? You know, the engineer knows the positives, but he should know some of the side effects. I'd like to know if that, what that could be. Also, how long will it take? And how disruptive will it be? I recall when the road was being done in the overpass, how drawn out and how inconvenient.
You know, Patrick Holbrook wrote?
That was for me. Yeah, and then they did the next overpass.
But that was government doing that.
Right, but it's an effect of a change. So we're having a change here, you know, how long and how arduous and how painful will it be for me to drive down? That's the only road that I can use to get into my home.
There are time parameters within which they have to comply. And if it runs over, they have to come back to the town, not us, and.
Right, but I'm just concerned that it's going to take me 15 minutes to get to the supermarket or 15 minutes to get to the highway when I have to go to work or, you know, go out or whatnot. So these are some of the questions and concerns that I think, you know, if you think about it, that we have. And this is obviously a big investment for this company. So they're probably investing a lot of money, right? I'd like to know kind of what that cost would be because they're not going to spend a certain amount of money without expecting something back in return, which I think one of those ladies also said. I'd rather keep it smaller and not let it grow to such an extent that it becomes, you know, a big eyesore. Because I am living there for, you know, 20 years and I want my property value to go up as well and to enjoy my home and not smell. And I hope that if they do these improvements, it will be better. But those are some of my concerns.
Thank you so much for your time. Anyone else wish to be heard? Take your time. Just name an address for the record, please.
My name is Barbara Paeth, P A E T H, and I live at 192 Castle Loop in Victorian Gardens, which is on Furrows and Waverly. And everything is right across the street from our area with the garbage trucks and everything else in the. I was wondering as far as the trains, how many trains would be coming back and forth? Right now, we have very few. And to get the product off the train into the silo, what kind of security they might have to, to keep that from the dust going into the air? My other question is also how long, you know, it would take to build this facility? And how much, you know, the air pollution would be, you know, affected by that? And if it takes a year or two, I mean, the people in the area are going to be, you know, breathing all that in. And then I was also, it might sound silly, I don't know about if there's, the silos are 60 feet, about, you know, the airport being nearby. I mean, we have the tanks now and I saw some kind of stand there with lights and everything. I'm thinking about is that, you know, so that planes can see it, so.
They would have to conform with any rules, regulations for what tower or styro or whatnot would have on it.
Yeah, and then, you know, I just wanted to, because I'm very near, right there on the corner. So I just wanted to, not enforce her.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Be careful walking back. Does anyone wish to be heard? Anyone further wish to be heard? Come on down, name an address for the record, please.
Hello, everyone. Gabrielle Corso, 67 Somerset, in Holbrook, 11741. C O R S O. And my husband's back there, Jason, too. The little one's asleep.
Did you write the letter and sign it from your kid, two and a half years old?
Yeah, she's a half, she's six months older from the battery storage thing, so she's growing. Master negotiator. She's incredible. She should be up here, not me.
Veteran of the zoning wars.
That's, I don't know how you guys did it with kids. It's tough, 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 tough. So I apologize. I came here like ready to say one thing and there was just a lot of information. So I'm going to try not to be redundant. I just want to make sure all the points are addressed. And I think most of it has been brought up already, but, you know, I came here to support the application. Just as long as it's not a wolf in sheep's clothing. You know, on the outside looking in, 30,000-foot view, it looks great. Looks like a benefit from current structure. Basilico, they have a good reputation from what we understand. Demonstrated expertise, which is really important in industry. You know, they have made improvements. You know, I've only, I know they've only owned the property a couple of years. So I apologize if I bring up anything, you know, legacy. But there were a couple of questions, outstanding issues. Like in the Zoom call, the only thing mentioned about a concrete batching plant was that it existed. Not that it was in operation, nothing specific about it. So just want to confirm if someone can check that there's no violations, that it's allowed to operate, et cetera. And, you know, another condition of this support is that there are no violations, no pending violations. I'm curious to see what Suffolk County found. You know, was it just a write-up or was it a material violation? You know, of course, safety is the biggest concern of the community. You know, we have a lot of, lot of young people there, a lot of people in general, a lot of businesses. So that is paramount. Second is this is, this isn't other people's money. That's what I'm used to dealing with. This is their own personal investment. So I want to make sure that everyone's personal investment is secured by the upgrade, that this isn't going to be a detriment. Again, it appears it'll sustain the current levels of property levels, values there right now. So, you know, I guess that's a check in the pro box. What I am unclear about, and I think one of the other residents discussed it, was, you know, I know there's always different differences in capacity and production. My concerns with increased, I, so there's a decrease in capacity, in total capacity allowed, given the DEC permits. But at what levels do they operate there now? What's their current capacity? What are they storing there now? Is this approval going to be a gateway into an increase in industrialization? An increase in production, an increase in, you know, storage of materials on the property than their current operation?
So to get to my question to one of your neighbors, when I said, you know, what would you rather see, right? And your answer would be at least in part, well, I want to know what's there now before I would make that decision, right? Is that, am I stating it accurately or no?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's a fair assessment. You know, I'm also a numbers person, so I like to, you know, I know better. I like metrics. So.
So, you know, there's 27 tons of storage today and they're going to decrease it to 13. That's, you know how to compare that.
That's it.
So you want to be able to compare what's proposed to what's there because you're not sure of what's there now, right?
That's it. That's the concern. You know, it all sounds great, but again, we don't want this to have a negative impact down the road. We don't want this.
Neither do we.
We don't want this to set a precedent for like a change of zone down the road, maybe.
Part of your concern, which I had stated earlier, and I think I addressed with one of your compatriots, is that in five, 10 years down the road, you are not looking at twice the capacity of production. Where is this going?
Exactly.
All right, we will delve into that for you because if I was at the podium, that would be my concern. What are we opening the door to?
Exactly, exactly. You know, other concerns, you know, is this increased material storage on the property? Is there, is there any, does it leach into the aquifer? You know, again, I'm not a, I'm not a land use expert. I'm not a hot mixed asphalt expert. I do know a little bit about battery energy storage and lithium ion batteries.
Well, that's not before.
That's, yeah, that's another matter. But again, I'm relying on the board to do the best for the community with all the information they have because they have a lot more, I think, than we have. And they have a lot more experience than, you know, a lot of the residents. I'm relying on you guys to make the right decision for the community.
And that's what we do well.
Yeah, it's pretty good. You know, we, my husband and I were watching a lot of the meetings when we were waiting, so it's good. Let's see.
Did you do a good job?
I thought so. It was entertaining. I mean, we, I watch it, so. Again, you know, they brought up increase in traffic, rail traffic, hours of operation.
You have that from one of your neighbors as well?
Yeah.
We'll find out about that.
Okay, I mean, is this, is this simply like replacement versus the cost to operate and repair? Does it make more sense for them to commit the investment, you know, into replacing the stuff than repairing the existing stuff? Because I'm sorry, you know, the stuff from 1960s, all great, but probably doesn't operate at 100% capacity nor efficiency. Is there any difference in the operation to include a new commodity or a new process? What's going to happen? So they said that they're going to scrap all the existing equipment. What's going to be in that footprint? Because I don't think there's anything proposed in the current footprint. I think it's all away from the community. So I don't know what else they're going to use in that.
That's a benefit if they move it away.
It is, it's a benefit, but what's going to go in the, where the existing equipment is? If they scrap it.
We'll get that answered.
Yeah, yeah, that's where I'm going with it. But yeah, we prefer to lie. I mean, it's, it's great. You know, any sort of conditions to minimize any negative impact to kids? You know, whether it is hours of operation or, you know, I guess this is a step in the direct, right direction, reducing emissions.
I would have to think, and I know some neighbors in yourself have processed it a few times. And I don't know if it's for a fact, so maybe someone can correct me. But I'd have to think there's some sort of covenant or restriction that they can't operate seven days a week, my brother's day. I'd have to think that. I'm not sure, but.
And if it's not there now, it's something that we would, after consultation with our council, consider imposing, should we even consider granting?
Okay.
If you want to come up, ma'am, you can come up for the record. We can't.
Also, just so you know, we as the board collectively have 90 years' experience. And he was a former town attorney for 13 years. Just because somebody gets up here, an applicant says something, doesn't mean that we attach ourselves to it and say, that's the truth. No, we delve into it and we examine it. If not us, the other agencies of the town. So it's not somebody says, turns one call and we say, oh, wow. No, we have a little more specific.
Good, good, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. And, you know, I think I understand some of the hesitancy of the residents who have been there a while because I think there was a suit, the state attorney, I think it was Spitzer at the time, brought a suit against the legacy owners in like early 2000s. But I guess the punishment didn't fit the crime to what they were doing there. I think they had Mount Asphalt there or something and people's cars were covered. But I don't even know if the DEC policed that, who brought the problem to the Attorney General. I don't have that information, but I understand where the hesitancy is coming from.
I could tell it wasn't in front of this board.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no. This was Spitzer when he was Attorney General, way, way back. So I think, I think that's all, like, you know, everything else is pretty much covered. And it's, you know, I'm sure you got the letter I submitted. But all, you know, I think someone else brought up the flooding on Furrows. Yeah, there is flooding and the rain, so I don't know if this is related or not related, but I guess that's another agency outside the scope here, so.
Sure.
That's it. And they said that they, you know, can't, they're going to fix what happens south. Hopefully west as well. We can establish a future mutually beneficial relationship going forward.
What do you want to see happen on the western portion?
I'm sorry?
What would you like to see happen on the western portion?
Oh, realistically? Like perfect? Oh, I mean, besides parks and all that other stuff, Trader Joe's. Come on, I'd walk over to Trader Joe's, it would be awesome.
All right, I ask for that. Thank you.
Maybe, maybe an unpopular opinion, but all right, you know.
Who said it was unpopular? Realistic, I don't know, but not unpopular.
Did you mean continue the roadway improvements over the entire frontage?
I'm sorry?
Did you mean continue the roadway improvements over the entire frontage?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Have a great day.
Thank you and your neighbors as well.
Does this young man want to speak? Good evening, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Chris Pascal. I live at 123 Colony Drive. P A S C A L E. Earlier, it was said that the silos wouldn't be raised by much. I would like it to be asked how much they'll be higher. That probably isn't the plans you already have. Mr. Basilico had said, sorry.
Basilico?
Mr. Basilico had said that he would consider adding or amending a, I don't know if it was a filter or something to the top of the silos. I would like to make sure that that was put in, if the plan is approved, that that's put in, in writing in the plan because if it's not in writing, then it doesn't have to be done. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Gordino. You get to get up. I didn't want to interrupt you.
Thomas would like to speak first and address some of those points.
Couple, Thomas Basilico, couple of points. There's five silos existing, total capacity. Total capacity is 1380, the large.
1380 what?
1380 tons. The large white ones, those are, those are 400 tons apiece. The new five silos is 1,250 tons.
You're reducing.
So it's slightly less total.
Correct.
Why are you going smaller? Don't businesses want to grow or anticipate growth?
That's, that's more than enough to do what we need to do.
Is that partially a function of the fact that you have four other plants?
We, oh, I only have one other asphalt plant on the island.
Oh, okay.
And we, it's in Farmandale, yeah. Go back to the West property quick, just to clarify. So we purchased that property affiliate company in 2018 or 19. The previous owner mined it, backfilled it with material, the DEC gave him a fine. He couldn't do anything with it, couldn't fix it. We bought it from, took over the DEC by consent order violation, spent over a million dollars, cleaned up the property, and had to bring it up to grade with clean material, tested by the DEC, inspected. No work by the battery company was ever done. The, the, it's 95% complete, up to grade now, not 100%. The battery company had a lease with the company, with the property. We had nothing to do with the, I mean, nothing to do with the proposal, they did everything. So just to clarify what went on, the battery company did no work. All the work we did was over, with DEC oversight, and we're 95% complete, remediation.
Mediation, right, sure.
Flooding on Furrows Road, it, it's, it's a hill on both sides. It kind of goes to the one spot.
Let me ask you something. You self-containing your drainage on your site?
Yes, we are.
Have you got to a permit of the town?
And with this, I think with this permit, there'd be additional drainage requirements.
And that was what I was getting at.
Correct. But the, as far as the sloping of everything, it probably needs extra drains. I don't know the town. Hours of operation, I mean, the, for public safety, there is DOT work at night, town work at night. The other week, we did work at the airport, Islip Airport.
You don't need to be working at 3:00 in the morning, though.
Per, per, per the DOT, you, that's when the job has to be done, between certain hours. Like the Islip...
You just testified, there's all this capacity, and you can store the stuff now, so you don't have to run. Am I confusing something?
No, you, no, you have, the, the capacity is only stores, the capacity is 1,000, 1,250 tons. The, the plant runs at 400 tons per hour. So in a given shift, you produce eight hours times 300, 400.
You can't have it both ways. You can't say that I can produce enough on Friday, so I don't have to start up at 5:00 o'clock in the morning on Monday.
It helps.
And then say, let me finish, and then say, oh, no, we have to be able to operate 24/7. You can't have it both ways.
I'm just, it, it helps by having the storage. It helps that from not having to start up early. Per two weeks ago, we had the Islip runway work, that was, there was requirements on certain times you could do the work because of the airplane.
The planes aren't coming, right.
So we did start up at, I think, 5:00 in the morning.
But why wouldn't you have stored it from the day before, from your production the day before?
Certain, an airport, you can't store it, an airport, this, an airport is a little different. You have 12 hours of storage.
I was an attorney for an airport for 13 years.
12, in this spec, it was 12 hours of storage.
You know?
In the spec, it was 12 hours of storage, just so we're clear.
Mr. Messina, may I ask a question? Maybe I'll ask it up to you. You are eminent counsel, Mr. Garberino. Do we have the authority and the power to set operations of hours if we find it?
If it's rationally related to the, the belief that's granted, we can do that. I, I think, I'll, I'll just leave it at that. And if we wanted, I, I would urge us that we reserve decision and speak to Mr. Garberino about, perhaps he can provide us some good counsel on, not only that, but there are other conditions possibly, that the public has come forward with tonight and that we should consider. Maybe we can't do them, maybe we can, but we should know what our options are.
And I can ask, Mr. Basilico, do you folks operate 24/7 currently?
Currently, no, no. We try to limit the night works as, as, as least as possible, and we have another plant, so we try and...
Sometimes you have, you're saying sometimes you have to.
Sometimes, sometimes you have to.
What are you permitted to do currently?
Currently, there are no restrictions on the hour of operation.
So currently, you could operate 24/7 lawfully?
Correct.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying that I, I personally want, I don't know anything about the manufacturing process of concrete.
Currently, we have no restrictions.
Well, and 24/7, however, means that they have to comply with the noise ordinance. And the complaint that we've heard tonight is, we try to get someone in the middle of the night to come out, so, so that they can, you know, write these summons for the noise ordinance, but there's no one to call at 3:00 AM.
How do we address that? The reason I bring that up is my daughter used to live in Brooklyn, and she lived next to a bar, and they, the noise would go to 4:00 in the morning, and there was nobody to call, and the city wouldn't send an inspector, and it'd be dead quiet.
Right, at 9:30 in the morning, right.
So we're going to have to take that under advisement, not Brooklyn, but you folks.
I don't know if there are any other, I think those are the main points that were the questions.
I had some, if I may, just...
I think Mr. Guadino can answer.
Let me just, I don't know, because if these are not yours, or you'd rather Mr. Guadino answer them, production, reduction versus increasing. Where, does this plant have the ability to produce and store more than currently you, that it has?
No, it would be less, because we're eliminating one plant.
Okay, so...
400 tons per hour.
How often, how, how, what's been your capacity, what, what's been your output over the last year? How many times have you gone to full capacity with both plants?
Since we've owned it, it's been, we haven't, we haven't gone full capacity in the last three years.
So the benefit isn't really from full capacity, it's the potential for full.
Potential. Correct.
So if this were to be granted, your production capacity would be less? The same or more?
Our production capacity would be less. The capacity...
You know, and I, I, there's a really horrible question on my, your production ability. Yes, that's why you were saying, what is this idiot talking about? Production capacity. Your production ability will go up, stay the same, or remain? Not how much you're going to do, but what will it allow you to do? Will you be able to make more?
No.
Make the same, or you'll be limited, you'll be making?
You'll be limited to 400 tons per hour with them.
And what do you do now?
We, we can do 4 and 150, so it's a total of 550 with the two plants.
And what do you typically do?
Typically, we do between 3 and, on a busy day, it could go up to 4, 350, 400, depending. It's all on, it's all on...
Your capacity will increase? How much you can store will increase?
No, total storage is slightly less.
Okay.
I have one question. Storage now, you can store on a property now?
Yeah, there's silos, yeah. They can hold the material, yeah.
And how long, just curiosity, how long can you store in the silos now compared to the new silos?
The new silos, you can probably go up to four days. These, it's probably two days, realistically.
Also, another question about these, one of the members of the public asked, about the trains. Will the train traffic, I don't even know if you control the trains or that the MTA, will the train traffic increase, decrease, or remain the same?
The train track will remain the same. The train traffic is not going to change. The only thing we did when we first took over part of the train was, they weren't using it to its capacity, it needed repair, so we repaired it, and we were able to take cars in by train to deliver stone rather than bring it in by truck. So that's what...
And isn't it a fact that you have a very limited window, because the LIRR is really commuter railroad? There's only a very limited window that you could put commercial, if you will?
Yeah, right. I think we get two deliveries a week.
Right, exactly.
But it'll, whatever we get by, all I'm saying is, whatever we get by rail eliminates trucks on the road. That's the only benefit.
Just so I, I know, do you know, I know you're not an engineer, but do you know how many, one train load equals how many trucks?
One train load, we take 18, is 1,800. So 1,800 divided by a truck is usually 30, 40, 40, so that's...
Almost like 19 times, like one train for 19 trucks?
Two and a half trucks for a train, so that's 36. It's, it's 44. One, one load, it eliminates 44 loads by truck, basically, 45 loads.
And just one...
It's a benefit, the train is a benefit for everybody.
Oh, sure. And one other question, because the gentleman raised it, the, how much of the silo is going to be raised? And I understand...
If you look at the chart, I think it's, I, I think it was like two inches, maybe.
It was almost the same. But there's going to be a motor on top.
There's a motor on top of the existing one, so.
Oh, okay. Okay. So it's really no difference, they're not going to be...
It's really, I think, neg, negative.
Thank you.
So I think Thomas touched on most of them, most of the points. But I, I just, I wanted to start off with, you know, I, with all due respect to a planner, I don't think there's a tension in the code at all. I, I understand...
He said that.
Oh, you said tension, I'm sorry. But no, but, but pointed out that there was a...
You disagree with that.
No, I'm sorry, you're right. You used the word tension. But I do, I think you'd said that, you know, that there's like, you know, that the, the law generally encourages the elimination of non-conforming uses over time. And that's, that's a true statement that, you know, from, from, from case law. But in this town code, the town code actually does the opposite. And like I said, when, you know, when I was starting to touch on that, that section 68, 415, it talks about, you know, forget about reconstruction, we're not going to argue, but it talks about extension, but within limits. And the limits are 25%. So the code, while the, the general statement is, you know, that the, you'd like to eliminate non-conforming uses, the town code actually allows for an expansion up to 25% by special permit. So if you look at the sections, just...
Well, can I say one thing?
Sure.
Tension that actually was Mr. Messina's term, which...
Yes, I, I apologize. I didn't mean that.
No, 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 I have to apologize. I, just so the record's clear, I agree there is a tension with this application in that, in my mind, the 25% is, we get it, you want to increase the production, you want to increase the size of the plant, 25%. This is neither fish nor fowl. This is, we're not increasing it, we're increasing little bits of it, we're actually decreasing it. And so therefore, does the town want us to eliminate when we want to make it better rather than worse? That's the tension that I see.
That, that's exactly...
It's not your typical application.
It's not.
Hundreds of times.
That's exactly right. And I was...
That's the tension. It doesn't mean a bad tension.
No, no, I agree. Maybe good tension, right. No, I, I was just pointing out to just say that, well, like I said, usually, you know, there's a, there's a movement towards eliminating non-conforming uses. But, but Islip actually recognizes, sometimes you got to let non-conforming uses expand. That's not us, though. We're not doing that. We're actually going the other way.
Nobody's accusing.
Yeah. No, I know. I just wanted to get it out there. The other thing is, I, I know there was a question, and I don't think Thomas addressed it, about the, about the time, you know, the, how long it would take. I think the residents wanted to know how long it's going to take, because they didn't want to be inconvenienced, and I don't blame them. Remember what I said earlier? Most of this stuff is equipment. It comes pre-made, it's prefabricated, it's bolted together, it's lift the stuff up. Thomas said the whole thing will probably take four months to put together. It's really just like a giant erector set, you know, add the belt, lean it up on the, you know, I'm, I'm simplifying it, but you know what I'm saying. The silos come already made.
They're not welded.
They're already prefab, yeah. So we're not building necessarily, we're assembling more than building. So I think that's important. I did touch on the, on the drainage, and I'm sure the engineering department here in the town will require additional stone water containment, and that's not a problem.
You could ask that you do anything more than keep your drainage on your site.
Yeah, and that's, we're happy to do that. There was a, there was a statement made, like, how can we trust these people, you know, and I think the lady said, you know, if they're a wolf in sheep's clothing. I think they're a sheep in sheep's clothing. I mean, they've already demonstrated a huge commitment, both financially, their resources, to be a good neighbor. If you look, and again, I don't want to really talk about the 10-acre site, but the 10-acre site was really the, the most egregious. That was the illegal mining that was referred to. They spent...
The zoning runs with the land, and while your clients may be model citizens, the next owners may not be. And that's what we have to, exactly. I don't think, you know, I don't, I don't think that was meant as an insult to you.
Oh, no, no, no. And I wasn't taking it as an insult. I was just saying, I was just trying to point out that they've actually, they put their money where their mouth is. I mean, they've spent a million dollars.
And I acknowledge the improvement.
Yeah, yeah. So they, they, they've really done a nice job. And then the question is, somebody asked if we could come into the site, and the answer, of course, is yes. And Michael Basilico, when he, when we were on the Zoom call, you know, he referred to, you know, inside, come inside the wall, you know, and he's happy to have people come in. No one has taken him up on that. He actually even gave people his cell phone.
Young lady, ready, willing.
Happy to give you a tour. That's right. That's great. So, you know, I didn't, not hiding anything. Trying to, we want, you know, I know, I didn't...
And you know what, Mr. Guadino?
Yeah.
I, I know, because I, I know the caliber of attorney that you are, I knew that was going to happen. So I have faith in you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That was kind of it, for the most part. And I just, I will go back and, you know, the issue of the, of a, of a covenant, you know, with respect to hours of operation, I think is just a difficult one, given the nature of the business. I understand, you know, typically, that's, that's not something that people, you know, people would kind of expect that. But as Thomas did mention, you know, these, these contracts, you know, there's, there's obligations at certain times, as you mentioned, the asphalt for the airport, you know, was a certain spec. You know, we have to be able to bid on the jobs. You know, obviously, we're not going to operate the plant at night, so somebody can get their driveway done in the morning. That's not happening. And as he said, it, it, it is rare, but it does happen. And we have been working with the town, just to, to let everyone know, and we've been contacting, I spoke with the, the current town attorney, you know, I asked him, who do we call when this is going to happen? Because we want the neighbors to know ahead of time, so that they could know when something was happening. So if they called, if somebody called the town, the town could say, no, they're doing the airport job this morning. That's why they started up earlier. But again, with this new silo technology, as, as Mike, as Thomas said, you know, we're hoping that that, the, the amount of early morning and night work gets reduced, because if we have the opportunity to make it ahead of time, I'm sure they will. So, yeah, thank you. I have nothing further. Thanks so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you all.
All right. I'll make a motion to reserve application.
Oh, come on, stealing my time.
Sorry, sorry.
I'll second the chairman's motion. I'll second the chairman's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Application reserved. We have time, 62 days by law, to render a decision. We'll do the best we can as quick as we possibly can. And we appreciate all your time.
And thank you for how you've supported yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And you ask good questions.
Are you sure you want to go withdrawal, or do you want to discuss it on the other side?
All right, we'll discuss it.
Yeah.
I, I know, so I make a motion to adjourn.